And Ms. Teager will not be here tonight. They both have things going on in their private life that need to have a way. I thought I should ask her whether her rules come up.
Was it your thinking?
Well, last time I didn't know if he was on vacation this weekend or if he doesn't show up, we'll just assume. Because he said something about going on vacation, but I don't remember when it started. So we could get two more people to order and call him in. Okay, we're a little heavy on this side, so you're going to carry your weight tonight. Okay, City Councilman on October 25, 2010, will now come to order. Remember times in K9, gender only, approximately start times, please turn off all cell phones and papers, please erase your being, and the city clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor and town?
Here.
Service question flash and light.
No, wait, because we just started.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Stiker?
Here.
Councilman with a L?
Here.
Councilman Dan?
Here.
Councilman Corson?
Here.
Councilman Teager? Councilman Johnson? Councilman McElroy?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a phone.
Yes, thank you. Did you want me to do that? Okay.
Good evening, everyone. We'll be audience free, grace from all the silence, and join us in reciting the pledge of allegiance.
And in the honor of the citizens, we should give just both kids their family information, and also Maggie Wallace is one that has a right. Thank you, sir.
I would like to declare from the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, all is cast aside. Well done.
Eddie Thomas?
Andy Thompson?
Andy Wood?
Maxine Delingo?
Travis Sicker?
Charlie Carter?
Laura Reese?
Ariana Chavez?
Maria Gonzalez?
Jeremy Gonzalez?
Peter Mercado?
Pierre Moser? Jean Lavelle?
Churri Niship?
Angel Ariza?
Chris Flannery, City planning?
Diane Watson?
Charlie Perez?
Barbara Peterson?
Janet Snow?
Brian Snow?
Everyone on the speakers?
Jeremy Ties?
Alvin July?
Is he that hungry?
Mayor Roquillo?
Alvaro Villar?
Hilaire Raya?
Aki Maya?
Sophie Almaya?
Jennifer Johnson?
Crystal Cosse?
Lisa Northall?
All evening, folks, Lauren Goposch?
Sharon Edwards?
Harold Parks and Recreation?
Anthony Bullard?
Carolyn Key, Parks and Recreation?
Stephanie Stevens?
Ms. Renee Cordeau, to go with Minnesota Vincents?
Sarah Hillerang?
John Howard, Information Technology?
Bill Walker, Chief of Police?
Noel Wusk, RTD?
Mike Turner, RTD?
Lynn Howell, City Manager's Office?
Thank you all for coming. It's been a nice day in a lot of places for the city here. I know we play to a audience over here, but it's always nice to really see them. Thank you all for coming. We've got a whole bunch of things we're going to do today, Mr. Flannery, which is, I love to do stuff. Do you have someone from Parks and Rec that's going to come up and begin their presentations?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council. I'd like to bring up Carolyn Key, who's going to introduce Stephanie Stevens with the Colorado Parks and Recreation Association. Okay.
Honorable Mayor, members of City Council, it's my pleasure to introduce this evening Stephanie Stevens, the Executive Director of the Colorado Parks and Recreation Association, to share with you some recent awards that our city and the Parks and Recreation Department specifically received at our annual conference.
Thank you for having me this evening. This is always one of the greatest pleasures of my job as Executive Director, to really recognize some really outstanding programs and professionals throughout the state, so thank you for having me. The first award this evening I'd like to represent is our Initiative of Management Award. In working to create community among Parks, Recreation, and Golf staff members, Commerce City put together a series of fun, creative exercises that helps strengthen relationships not only among its own staff, but between staff and community members and organizations as well. That participated in exercises that had been listing city parks and trails on an amazing race type scavenger hunt, personally thanking its fat five community members and dropping up a goodie bag of promotional items at community businesses, large and small. These exercises taught staff members how to rely on each other and their individual skills, to feel more comfortable interacting with community members, and how to promote our department and services to various community members and businesses. Commerce City benefits greatly from the team building, promotional, and interactive skills that staff members learn through these exercises, and which they continue to use and improve daily. Accepting this award this evening are Recreation Manager Farrell Bullard and Golf Manager Paul Keating.
Now, you don't even think you're going to sit down here. You're both going to come on up here and please, and please say a few words. But here's my, here's my thing, and I know Mr. Bullock will second anything that I might say. Our city, it'd be nice, our city to other people is our Parks and Recreation Department. What people see when they come to this city, ours in any time is our parks, the programs that we have, all of those things. You are the face of ours. Don't ever be embarrassed by all this great stuff that you do. You should just be, just so, you know, into it. Because you all did such a great job. So, okay, are you okay, sir? Is that right? Okay. You know what you do, so don't hide it. Tell them about it. So, just, just a few things.
Well, I'll just say, you know, the three different programs we put together, Paul, Mike Brown, who's a plus planning operations manager, Stephanie, on vacation this week, and myself, we were able to put it together for all of our full-time staff, so that comprises about forty to fifty people, and I just think we're really proud, because it lets all, everybody work together, and it doesn't matter, you know, if you're the director or the frontline full-time person, it puts everybody on equal playing field and lets people get to know each other, which helps those relationships. And I think one of the fun things when we went to the businesses, we, this is a picture of some of the goodie bags that we made, and we did large and small businesses in Commerce City, and just to walk in there and introduce ourselves and handle something, a lot of them were really shocked. They were like, what do you want? What are you selling? You know, and, and nothing. We just wanted to say, you know, thanks for being a business in Commerce City, and we just wanted to introduce ourselves. So, I know it's brought our department and our team together, and, you know, and Sarah was directing it, and it's all about, helps us come together, and all kinds of things. Thank you.
Sorry, we can't say something?
I guess the only thing I would add to that is that we do find creative ways to get together, not only as a group in the Parks and Recreation Department, but also creative ways to get out to the community and share some of what we have to offer as a city and a department with everybody in the city, and sometimes even beyond the city. So, it's just a great honor to be a part of it, and also to be recognized, so thank you.
Your folks can't really be served as a model for other cities around the state, so.
We are the proud residents of it.
Very good.
How do you offer your, your community free recreation classes? As Commerce City Parks and Recreation, the creation of the Healthy Schools Partnership has enabled over one hundred and fifty children and their families to receive affordable health care and reach individual goals of sustaining an active and healthy lifestyle through participating in recreation programs and classes that match their interests and meet the referred health needs for free. Children and families are referred to the Recreation Division in an effort to decrease obesity rates, increase self-esteem, and improve mental health through a unique partnership between three organizations: Commerce City Parks and Recreation, Community Health Services, and Community Reach. According to fifteen-year-old Caitlin, "I love dancing because it lets me let out my feelings. It expresses me. I love my boxing class. Instead of taking my anger out on people, I surrender out on the bag. I wouldn't be in these classes if I had to pay for them. My family doesn't have money for it." Congratulations. Accepting this award tonight is Lisa Northall, Recreation Supervisor for Youth Services.
You didn't think you were going to get that. We are honored that all of this is being recognized. You should be honored also.
Thank you. I think the best part of this is I got to know quite a few families that never stepped in the Recreation Center, and they've been involved now for two years in this program, and it's unbelievable that she was successful in this, and one is showing right now, it's just, he was very, you know, phenomenal. He's got a lot out of the programs, many of his kids and the parents, many of the parents are using these programs to leave their own jobs while their children are in the program. So it's been a great goal. Great success. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The Colorado Parks and Recreation Association does award two of our highest awards. One goes to a fellow professional, someone who's been in the profession for ten years or more, and the other one is here with us tonight, and that's our Outstanding New Professional. The CPRA New Professional was recently asked, "What are your three favorite things about your job?" Without hesitation, she replied, "First, I go to work with teens, and I love this age group. It's a blast hanging out with them and watching them grow. I feel teens are so underrepresented, yet are the most crucial age to dedicate their time to. I'm making an impact in this job. Next, I believe in recreation as an institution. I believe there are things people will only learn by play and socialization, even adults. I think people need to make recreation and leisure more a priority for the overall welfare. I'm one of the fortunate people who's actually using their college degree, so it's an added bonus that I get to practice what I preach. Finally, it's fun. There are very few jobs that you get to go play and hang out, watch families interact, see a kid learn a new skill, and meet other people who share your needs and interests." Jenna Johnson is the Recreation Coordinator for Teen Programs with the City of Commerce City. As you can see from Jenna Johnson's responses, she understands, embraces, and believes in her participants and our profession. Jenna is an exceptional person, and we are proud to have her representing the Colorado Parks and Recreation Association as the 2010 Outstanding New Professional. Congratulations.
But, but thanks for trying. Just anything that comes to your mind.
Well, this was such a surprise to me. I had no idea. So to even be nominated for this is such an honor, just the fact that they thought of me enough to do this and to win was just exceptional, was a great, definitely career title, I guess. So I'm just so honored. I really, I love my job. The Recreation Department is incredible, all of the professionals over there are outstanding, and I'm just so glad that I can remain in Commerce City this way, and I love the teens in this community. I wouldn't pick another age group to work with, so it was extremely honored, and, but...
I'm in the Red Center a lot, and I see all the people that we honor tonight, in different times, doing different things, but they're always walking around with a smile on their face. Now, there's not too many jobs you can go to all the time and see somebody smiling because they like where they're going. So, I mean, I feel honored that we have people here that enjoy coming to work so much that they never even call us sick. And, you know, I mean, when Phil was pregnant, she had the baby in her passenger. No, that's, but, I mean, I am honored to represent a group that represents the city so well. I have to say thank you to you. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming. Ms. Key, I know you never want to take any of the credit, and you always say it's your group, and it is, but I want to recognize you also. And you're going to stay there, because you're going to do Creepy Hollows, is that right? Okay, next item on, we're going to recognize the winners of the Creepy Hollow Campus Painting Contest. Mr. Flannery, I mentioned you're going to introduce Ms. Key again. Look at the presentation. Hello, and Ms. Key, who?
Again, Honorable Mayor, Members of City Council, it's my pleasure to introduce to you Lisa Northall. You will be presenting this evening's Halloween Campus Contest Award Winners for 2010. And I'm imagining that Lisa will point out to you that if you haven't noticed, we've had a little decor to Council Chambers this evening, so you do have an opportunity to see the actual campus paintings that we have here this evening.
I'm here for the Campus Painting Contest, but it's my second year, and we have, we had nine schools this year participate, and as Phil mentioned, they're all back there, so please take a closer look. They did such a good job, and it was really hard this year for the Parks and Recreation Department to pick the winners. We had a little, had some arguments going on in this year, so they were very creative this year, didn't just use paint, kind of their own mediums, and it was really exciting to see these come in. So, they're all back there, and Carolyn has actually flipped through and showed the same paintings up here on the screen, those of the, the ones over here. So, Community Leadership, Academy, Bell Creek Charter, Rose Hill, After School Program, Dupont Elementary, Landmark Academy, Central Elementary, Timic Elementary, also in Monaco, all participated. So, the winners, second place winners, were Monaco Elementary, and unfortunately, we didn't have any kids that were able to attend tonight, but your teacher is here, and she is here to present the, to the second winners.
Yeah, it was just, we're going to do group pictures at the end also, so, don't anybody sneak out there.
And the first place award goes to all the faculty, and they also will be running the faculty room. So, the kids did a great job, and I definitely encourage you after the meeting tonight to check out the award, but we did list all of the names of the first and second place winners on our PowerPoint presentation, we couldn't, we're not able to attend, so we did a great job, and please come on Saturday to our Creepy Hollows event from one of four at the Recreation Center, where they will all be on display, and last year's will be on display also.
If we could get all the people from Parks and Rec, and all the people from the contests, and we'll come up, and if the council would like to come and be in the back, we'll take the group pictures. Carolyn, can I see your picture? Okay, while we, while we get there, if you come up once here, and nobody will get the pictures of all of us, and, 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 and,[1760.12] Thank you all, all the volunteers. As each of us has said in the past, our city runs the best, because we have so many volunteers in our city. It's terrific. Happened to be someplace this weekend, and it's not a happy occasion, but a gentleman was speaking, spoke so highly of Commerce City, even though he was not a Commerce City resident. Okay, next item on the agenda is Citizen Communication. There were two public comment posters made available on the table at the entrance to the council chambers, and that's how we are gonna do them from this point forward. So, one of them is for, to sign up to speak about anything that is not on the agenda, and the other one will be to sign up for things that may be public areas. As you come forward, have just take your name and address for the record, and remind each speaker within three minutes. City councils are reminded that they are not to engage in discussion or debate, may ask further questions, and if their concerns are inappropriate. The city manager will generally assign staff members to get the necessary information to solve the issues. The first person on the list is Sandy Pruders. Thank you for coming.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, councilmembers, and everyone. On Sandy Pruders, I reside at 6951 Turney Street. On behalf of many seniors, I want to, we would to thank the city council for holding the senior summit in Ward 1 on October 5th. We especially want to thank those of you who came, and listened to our concerns, and shared information with us, and we want you to know, we are looking forward to the formation of the Senior Advisory Committee for the city council. We believe this will be a way that we can ensure the senior boys and our seniors center remain vital parts of our quality community for a lifetime. Also wanna thank gentlemen Benson and Paul Fola for attending our October birthday lunch at the senior center. These are held every third Tuesday of each month. We invite any of you to attend those meetings whenever you can. They're wonderful, informal, meet and greet sessions, and it's a good place to get to know each other. So, thank you.
Thank you. And just, I'm sure I'll speak for anyone who wasn't there, realize that all of us try to get to everything, but sometimes other things do come up, and that was one thing I wish I could have, but, small health problem. But, thank you very much. Next person on the list is Danny Thomas.
Good evening, Danny Thomas, 7630 Highway 2. Got two little problems tonight. The one is on Highway 2 at 72nd Avenue, where they just got through repaving. Have you noticed where they have the arrow pointing to the merge left as you're coming north on Highway 2? And in the middle, they have a sign that says, "Merge to the right." So, I have to... Second thing, thank you. Probably our captain should know this, that they're passing some only $50 bills around Commerce City right now. We had a tenant at the park, at one of the grocery stores here in Commerce City, he got six $50 bills, and one of them was bad, so you guys might wanna watch that a lot, because it's getting that time, I guess.
Thank you very much, sir. Mr. Flannery? Seems like, that seems like a simple thing we could get care of. And then Chief, I imagine maybe we should put an O.A.L. maybe on something? Yeah. I never have to worry about that, and I can't remember the last time I saw a 50. Thank you very much, but, thank you. Next person on the list is Shirley Grills. The other day, I said something about Tracy Snyder was my hero, because of the little bit that she complains about her back problem, but after talking to Shirley on Saturday, Shirley is my new superstar.
Good evening. I'm Shirley Portles, and I'm at 721 St. Avenue, and I'd like to address the mayor and the whole community. I will probably address this more to our youngest state councilperson, since he went to school here, and is very familiar with the type of students that we have. I wrote a letter, and I think you've all read it, and written it to the others, just before my speech. I realize that for many years, we have an uninsured rider situation, and if you're stopped, they don't go to your car. I'm wondering, when you told these comments, if there is some way that the children in our automotive department can do something with these cars? Many of them are Spanish or Mexican, and they love to paint cars, they love to repair cars, they love to modify them, and I think this would be an excellent opportunity for them to learn those skills. They probably have business with King High School, and understand the school is pretty efficient, and the city is pretty very well there. And perhaps if you can look into this, maybe repair parts will be given to them, and many vehicles that have to go and be crushed, and money to paint them, or modify them, something like that. But I really feel that we are wasting a resource here for our students. And if you would kind of guide me, I would appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, General Spencer.
I want to apologize to you, I forgot to bring the blanket this evening, I'm so sorry. I know that's completely unrelated to this, but I had won the blanket, the last blanket, the lowest canvas will ever make, and you had asked me to bring that, I brought it to the service, and you were asking to bring that this evening, and I walked out the door without it, I apologize. But you have my phone number, so please call me, and I will bring it anytime you'd like to see it, or show it to your friends, I would be more than happy to do that for you. I apologize for forgetting to bring it. Thank you, it's one, it's treasured, and it will be treasured for the rest of my life. So, thank you so much, and I apologize, and I will get that to you for anytime you wanna show it to anyone.
Thank you. That wasn't part of my plan.
No, that was not part of my plan.
No, no, and actually, you're fine, we can ask, we can make this go on for hours.
But when she looked at me, I knew exactly what she was meant. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Benson, U.S. State Member?
Yes. You know, I'd like to know what experience the city of Dallas has had with this type of ordinance, and I'm all for an ordinance that says you don't have insurance, your car gets towed, but I don't know how we can assume ownership of those cars to, put them into the auto shop class at a high school, that might be a difficult part of this, but I'd like to see us look into the ordinance. Where we were stopped, and we didn't have the insurance, and your car was gonna be impounded, begging for some reasonable fee, you could get it back, certainly, you could spend it there four, five days, it shouldn't go under $1,000, or anything like that, be something reasonable, so people get the idea, you're not gonna drive in Commerce City unless you have insurance, and this is the sort of thing that gets people's attention very quickly. Get your car to them, that gives you your attention, but I don't, I'm not sure I see the second part of this happening, where the city can assume ownership of those vehicles. You're talking about a fourth lien, and ask that there are constitutional issues in there, I don't know what, if, this letter doesn't say that that's what Dallas does, but I'd like to hear from some other councilmembers about, you know, just saying that your car's gonna be towed if you don't have group insurance, because you got what we described, if you have no liability insurance, just stay long.
Mr. Flannery, I would imagine this could probably go from you over to the police department to the chief, and it may not necessarily be these cars we're talking about, but there could be abandoned cars that may work into that kind of program. I'm sure this, this girl isn't mean to do it, and it would be other than legal, but she's at least thinking about something that may be good for the school district, maybe there's a different way that it could work.
Sure, Mr. Flannery, I think I, I think the chief is aware of this as well, and maybe what we can do is, is look at the issue itself, uninsured numbers, compare it to what's going on in the state, and with other jurisdictions, so that we have a clear picture of the fact.
Yeah, I agree. And then, maybe if someone who works with the school district, and I don't know if this is the case with Commerce Diego, was in the city that I worked, some of the cars that were abandoned, who went for auctions, and bring the city review numbers, maybe those type of vehicles, maybe they use in 14, but we wanna be sure that we're working with them. Mr. Benson, you have other comments?
I have a question for Mr. Gabor, is this a matter of statewide concern, or could this city, as its owners, in the absence of a statewide ordinance? I think the city has jurisdiction as a homeroom city to deal with tolling of motor vehicles, but we can look into those aspects. Do we know any other cities in the state of Colorado that would direct us to the city manager and the police chief? Do we know any other cities in the state of Colorado that would have this kind of ordinance, and how does it work?
We can, we can provide that feedback through reports, but maybe the chief knows all hands.
City Denver.
City of Denver.
Denver will tow you if you don't have group insurance?
They can have city ordinance, it's essential.
Good, okay, well, that's a pretty good example. Okay, we get people's attention.
Mr. Maria?
I just want to say, thank you to Shirley and Sandy, and really just all the people that come to talk to us each week, particularly the seniors. The seniors are always very conscious of getting involved in the city, and making sure that we know anything that they might need, and how we should address it. Oh, see, now, I think Ward 1 is my highest attempt, I can't believe it, so, I'm pretty proud of that, so, thank you all for coming. I'm pretty sure Ward 1's not, yeah.
Okay, children, children. I have two people on the list, but they may go, Ms. Carson, just wanna make sure that they...
Well, I hope I don't sit here and dig that, because I have a person to come, and they never miss a meeting, and they are here continually, so I just can't sit here and let that go on. But my question was, there was a ballot measure or something a while back, something along the lines of towing vehicles. Do you remember that?
I can introduce that for you.
Okay.
It was a ballot initiative, actually, in Denver, I believe, last year, and it's on this year in Lakewood. That was a little different, because in each of those cases, those ordinances also say that if you do not have your driver's license on your vehicle, you're being harmful, and this, I think, where you got something different in terms of insurance.
Is, did you have something additional, or is that...
No, that was...
Mr. Vogel, you're okay?
I was gonna mention the same thing, but we don't get that.
Great, thank you. Next person on the list is Anita Mercado.
Good evening. Thank you for coming. I didn't say thank you to all that came up, sorry.
Good evening. Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Anita Mercado, and I reside at 6521 Portway, Commerce City. I'm here from Commerce City One Community. We are very excited to be part of the Derby Fall Festival. We would like to personally invite you to our celebration at the Derby Research Center. Our work from District 14 students will be displayed along with several other activities on October 38th from 4 to 7 p.m. Derby will be filled with music, Aztec dancers, trick and trad street, and much more during delivery to the main event. Your presence and support would be greatly appreciated, and we hope to see all of you there.
Thank you very much, and that is one of the items that's on each of our calendars, and I know I will definitely be there, and I'll probably...
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, that is everyone on that list. The next item is approval minutes. There's only one set of minutes before council is seeking to approve, and there are minutes in meetings, September 27th, 2010. But before voting on the minutes, I need a motion to allow myself to stay for voting because of my excused absence, Ms. Flannery?
Yes, may I have your approval for the excuse of absence of my attendance on September 27th of 2010?
Mr. Maria?
I have a motion.
You have a motion to second to approve the minutes since September 27th, 2010. All those in favor, say a yes.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Motion passed, and now I entertain a motion to, to accept the regular meeting minutes. Ms. Carson?
Motion to accept an ask for on September 27th, 2010.
Any minutes, Flannery?
Second motion?
Okay, I have a motion as second. Motion as second to approve the minutes since September 27th, 2010. So, discussion, seeing none, in favor, see if I can say a aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Motion passed, and second. There's actually two items on the consent agenda this evening. Council is reminded that these items can be removed either of these items, or be removed in consent agenda for discussion purposes, at the request of a council member. Does anyone wish to remove any item from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I now have the motion to approve the consent agenda. Ms. Flannery?
Yes, may I have your approval for the consent agenda? Council seated.
Ms. General Maria?
I have a motion.
Actually, a motion as second to approve the consent agenda, we'll see if you can figure it out.
I have an ordinance, 1817, reads as follows, an ordinance demanding the 2010 budget for the city of Commerce City, Colorado, by the recognition of U.S. Department of Justice COPS Technology Grant in the amount of $110,000, the final purchase of 38 digital trunk radios, and two interoperable communications gateways to coordinate emergency services personnel during emergency responses, and the authorization of expenditure thereof. Second item is Resolution 2010-65, Resolution repealing Resolution Number 2010-56 regarding the execution and delivery of an equipment lease purchase agreement to finance certain energy efficiency equipment and systems, and reapproving and reauthorizing the execution and delivery of an equipment lease purchase agreement to finance the acquisition, purchase, and installation of certain emergency efficiency equipment and systems, reauthorizing the execution and delivery of documents required in connection therewith, and reauthorizing the taking of all other actions necessary to the consummation of the transactions contemplated by this resolution. And that is the extent of the consent agenda.
Okay, you got a motion as second, city attorney, turn the title, and request to roll all voters. Vote is 6-0, I'm sorry. Vote 6-0. In this honor, our resolution tonight, it was not included in consent agenda, because it requires a separate voice vote. This Resolution 2010-64, Resolution approving employment and personal services agreement between the city of Commerce City and Robert R. Geller as the city attorney. I would now entertain a motion at this time, Ms. Flannery?
Yes, may I have your approval of Resolution 2010-64? Council seated.
Mr. Vogel?
Second motion.
Okay, our motion is second to approve Resolution 2010-64, is there a discussion? Seeing none, we'll see if you can figure it out.
I read, Resolution approving employment and personal services agreement between the city of Commerce City and Robert R. Geller as the city attorney.
A motion as second, city attorney, turn the title, requesting a voice vote, please. All those in favor, see if I can find it, say a aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Motion passed, and second. Okay, Ms. Flannery?
Yes, I just wanted to congratulate the... Yes, I just wanted to congratulate Mr. DeAger and the client your service to Commerce City, and I just want to say thank you for all the work that you have done and all the years that you've been with us and the great work that you continue to do. So I just wanted to personally congratulate you for another great job and another great year. Thank you, sir.
Any other comments?
Hi, Colonel Ball.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, there's just one ordinance on second reading. This ordinance is 1839, an ordinance amending the Cable Television System Franchise Agreement between the City of Commerce City and Comcast of Colorado, IAX LLC, to extend the term of the franchise. Does council have any further questions or discussions regarding this ordinance, Mr. Ball?
We would like somebody from the staff to review this so the people in the audience and the people watching at home know exactly what we are extending, so nobody's confused with the fact that we are working on one without working with DISH or any other network.
Okay.
Greg Raines, Assistant City Attorney, is present in the audience, and he has been attending the meetings with the consortium, which has been working on the template for the franchise agreement that involves all of the cities in the metropolitan area, so I'll let Greg proceed with the summary of what progress has been and what this is about.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. This ordinance is to extend the existing cable franchise agreement that the city has with Comcast Cable or the DCI Cable. There's also an old franchise agreement with Wyeth and West, and as we all know, it's on Comcast. The city's franchise agreement with Comcast expires about two weeks. The idea behind the extension of three years is to allow large municipalities such as Aurora and Denver to negotiate with Comcast. Basically, all of the municipalities in the metro area are coming up for expiration of their franchise agreements within the next two to five years. There have been a couple that already expired earlier this year. Comcast agrees here, allowing municipalities to extend their franchises until after Denver and Aurora had the opportunity to negotiate with Comcast. What this does is it puts municipalities like Commerce City, they are a member of the Greater Metro Telecommunications Consortium, so they're on better footing with respect to the negotiation process, so as to see what Denver and Aurora get out of the deal. In the meantime, the GMTC, in particular the Subcommittee of the GMTC, which I am a part of, are negotiating with Comcast regarding sort of what would be regional areas of concern versus local areas of concern in the face of the franchise agreements in Denver. Councilman Ball had mentioned who the city has franchise agreements with and who we can negotiate with. There are no franchise agreements with entities such as DISH Network or DirecTV, or satellite communities or others. Just being able to go to the sky, they don't have to use any right-of-way, but Comcast does. Comcast, Quest, Excel, United Power. We have franchises with all those entities on the non-quest, Quest is used on our price according to the reason. So that's basically what this is about. This is extending the franchise agreement for another three years so the city can negotiate with the GMTC, other GMTC candidates, a lot more, a base of sort of greater strength with many, many more subscribers than anyone is how we'd be able to negotiate with that system.
Mr. Benson? Or Mr. Ball? Yes, can I answer your question?
Yeah. Okay. I'd like to add to that, I may, Mr. Mayor, before we take questions on it, okay? First of all, for the benefit of the audience and council members, the whole basis for franchise agreement where the city has leverage and the ability to even be placed in a negotiating position is because those entities that we negotiated with, that he referred to, that have franchise agreements require the use of our right-of-way in order to lay their facilities. And so by the city granting the use of our right-of-way, these companies in turn then agree to pay and to give the city certain consideration for the use of our right-of-way. So that's what this whole thing is about when we talk about a franchise agreement. Now, I had a conversation with Councilman Benson today regarding the issues that are subject to negotiation, one of which is what stations are available for Commerce City as opposed to other municipalities in the metro area. And the good thing about negotiation as part of the consortium is that the consortium then, which includes all of the cities in the metropolitan area, have the, has the ability then to lay out the ground rules that would apply to all the cities. And that would include negotiations for particular stations and channels that would be available. So in preparing for the meeting tonight and talking to Greg, and Greg made some phone calls in preparation for the meeting, so that we could assure you of our position in this regard, and that is, is that we'll have a position in regard to this negotiation that is equal to every other city in the metropolitan area. And that means that if one city is holding out for certain channels that another city doesn't yet have, if that were the case, then we're in a position of all negotiating in the same level of negotiation so that one city doesn't get something in that regard that another one doesn't get. Senator, speaking, Greg?
Yes, I know you're... Okay. Mr. Benson?
Yeah, you know, the substance, I guess, of our discussion was that there are cable systems, whether Comcast or not, maybe Colorado Springs, Fort Collins, other cities throughout the state, maybe other cities in the metro area. I don't know that they all have Comcast, they're probably, most of them do. But somebody needs to do a study to find out what channels each of these cable systems offer to their subscribers, what channels Dish Network offers, what channels DirecTV offers, so that we know what's out there and what's being offered by their competitors. I mean, they're in competition with DISH Network and DirecTV, and they should be, and they have done a lot in the past six months, from my view, to really enhance their channel offerings, but there are still some holes in their channel offering. Another thing is the tiers. Now, you can have three very popular channels, and then three different tiers, so if you want to get all of them, you've got to subscribe to the top tier. That's another thing that I think can be negotiated. Greg, are you a part of this consortium? Are you our representative on this consortium?
That is correct, Mr. Benson.
And so you're going to be there for all these discussions. And I would just like, I know the council would approve, to have you bring up these issues at those meetings about how we're going to resolve this, but somebody's going to need to do the research on what channel offerings there are out there and what's available through competition, so that we know exactly what we're getting and how the things are tiered. We want to be fair. If you want to have a basic channel offer on the first tier, and you want something else, you pay more for it, if you want something better, you pay more for that and not have basic channels in the third tier where you've got a big haul on before you can get just some of the basic channels. And that's the way, kind of like the Comcast does that, but I know that DISH Network and DirecTV do that. And one thing that Bob and I were discussing, there are a lot of sports tiers. DISH Network has for five bucks a month, all Fox Sports regional channels. For an extra five dollars a month, you don't have to rely on what is going to be on SCSA, SCSC, or CSP to get those regional channels. We ought to be able to get for five bucks extra a month, all of the Fox Sports regional channels. I mean, it took three years for Comcast to get ESPNU, but I only got it back in July, and I called them to congratulate them, but, because I've been calling for three years wondering where it was. And I'd just like to see these things brought up at the consortium, about this is what we would like to see. We need to see the stats, what these cable systems offer and what we're getting, and here's how we can improve this and maybe get you some more customers in the meantime. But I'd like to hear what the rest of the council has to say about that, because I can't break anybody in the staff or anything.
In that regard, Greg and I already had this discussion, and rest assured that when we, on behalf of Commerce City, and Greg in particular, comes to the table, he's going to be mentioning these very items to assure that we're getting not only what other cities in the metro area are getting, but whether or not it's possible then to also compare with the other networks, the competition, if you will, for Comcast, what they're providing, so that that can be a topic of discussion in the consortium negotiations.
Well, that's exactly what I'm asking, and I guess what we're doing here is, are we bound by what the consortium agrees?
Uh, no, not.
Right, okay. So what we're doing is we're going to wait for three years and see what the consortium comes up with, and then we've got other things that we want to discuss, we won't have the guilty in three years to work out our own deal, and we're not satisfied with the consortium as well.
In a manner of speaking, that's true. However, what the consortium is looking at doing is determining what items are sort of a general, excuse me, a general sort of regional issue, such as building practices, for example, versus very specifically local issues, such as the use of Channel A and other pay channel channels. From a broader perspective, the consortium has the ability to negotiate on behalf of its members, as long as the members are buying into it, to get a better deal, if you will, from the franchise. Certainly, this is an issue that can be brought up, it can be discussed with Comcast, and there, you know, I will say that there's a business model that Comcast has, and they may not be willing to budge too much, but to the extent that there are issues that Commerce City has, that are unique to Commerce City, certainly Comcast is willing to listen to that because there's going to be give and take both ways. There may be things that Commerce City is willing to give up, the municipalities are not willing to give up based on use of pay channels and that kind of thing. So there is going to be some bargaining strength that the city will have once we've figured out what these sort of local versus regional issues are.
But you're going to be representing us and to return.
That's correct.
Mr. Maria?
Greg, I think you do about three years to be all Commerce City. I appreciate that. I'll commit to that. No, I think Mr. Benson brings up a good point, though, and, you know, it's important you to mind that, though, that these negotiations won't be happening for three years, because we're going to wait to get that bigger bargaining chip when we go into the danger of consortium, so.
Yes, but these negotiations began almost a year ago with respect to the Subcommittee that I'm on that is working with Comcast to determine these regional issues versus local issues. And those meetings occur probably every, every couple of months, because it takes a while to get through Comcast's hierarchy of staff, which is one of the reasons we're starting now. Aurora's franchise is up next year, Denver's is up the year after that, Denver is already very involved in negotiating with Comcast at this point. So we're trying to create a model for both Denver and Aurora to use. Denver and Aurora are both involved in this negotiation process as well. And then as those two communities go through it, what we're hoping is on the other end, we'll have a solid year after that to negotiate sort of individually. So these are the issues that are important for Commerce City, in addition to these things that we've already discussed. But generally speaking, if one of those regional issues doesn't really work for Commerce City, and Comcast is relatively agreeable, we can make that a local issue and negotiate it the way we want to negotiate it, as long as Comcast gets up there, if that makes sense.
Great, thank you. And, you know, I said this on the first read, but I think it does make a lot of sense that we're aligning ourselves with the first and third largest companies in the metro area, actually, that was part of it.
Mr. Benson, do you have another comment?
Your comment, yes, do you have another comment? Okay, yeah. I think that, you know, Comcast was going to sell to somebody. The value of that company is based on the number of subscribers. I'm saying that right now, the value of Comcast is between $2,000 and $3,000 per subscriber. They don't want to lose subscribers. It hurts the value of their company, hurts the value of their stock and everything, so just keep that in mind. They want to keep and get more subscribers. That's one way to argue about, you want to get more subscribers, obviously, $2,000 per subscriber.
Okay, now this is going to come off with the other side of this. I've got a real challenge. I'm more a free market system kind of guy. If Comcast doesn't have what I want, and DISH does, then I'm going to go to DISH, but I don't think it's the government's role to tell you what you're going to watch or what you're not going to watch. You know, it just brings back books from the olden days, Fahrenheit 451 to 1984. Right now is a basketball team that I want to watch, but next time is you're forced to watch us on Monday night, or a Monday night. I got a real problem with us going in there saying we want these certain stations. If you're not happy with Comcast, pay your money someplace else. It's just a personal opinion, but boy, I hate seeing the government getting involved in some of this money or detail stuff. Mr. Benson, I know you have an answer to that.
Right. You see Comcast is a wired network system, but DISH Networks, obviously, are not. They have a big advantage because they have a wire coming in your house. And if somebody wants to, I know somebody wants to switch, I think they were ready after they've gotten in, and it is competition for Comcast. I think that Comcast has really built the competition, competition for Comcast and DirecTV, and that's why they've gotten better and better and better, especially just in the last year, they've gotten a ton better. But we have the ability under federal law to negotiate a non-exclusive franchise with a cable company. We have rights away, if somebody else wanted to come in and put up their own wire, the problem is the infrastructure. If somebody else wanted to come in and put up a wire, the infrastructure would cost them, I can't tell you how many millions of dollars to compete with Comcast in this series. So they have, they don't have, they have the equivalent of monopoly. And so I think that we have the negotiating power with them in their monopolistic position, and we should use it. We have the best thing that we can, of course, and I've got no challenge with that, but I'd rather we're negotiating for money than for some sports issue.
Ms. Mayor? I would hope.
If council prepared for our motion, I have approval of ordinance 1839 on second reading.
Mr. Maria?
I have a motion.
I have a motion as second to approve the ordinance on second reading. City attorney, read the title.
Title of the ordinance reads as follows. An ordinance amending the Cable Television System Franchise Agreement between the City of Commerce City and Comcast of Colorado, Non LLC, to extend the term of the franchise.
My motion in, and a second, city attorney, read the title. Do you have another commentary? Did I just forget something? Okay. I have a motion and a second. City attorney, read the title. I have all, all votes, please. Press, let me push it, huh?
I don't understand.
Okay, there you go. Okay, the vote is six, yes, passes on second reading, thank you. You're moving on to setting items? These are items set down.
These are items that, um, we may not need to take any action on. Um, as to the community board of Landry to provide Mr. Mike Turner and Mr. Ross, um, and RTD to come forward and make their investigation. Mr. Mayor, members of council, I don't know who wants to speak first, but I would expect, uh, Mr. Busk would want to come up and address the court. Are we going to hold him to three minutes?
I don't think you need to.
No, I'm just joking.
Hi, I'm Mr. Mayor, members of council. A privilege to be here again. Just a few short months ago, I think before the beginning of summer, we made a presentation. A lot has happened in those few months since I was here last. One is, um, we've ordered contractors to learn how to wear the Eagle P3 for the construction of the Eagle line, the Eagle P3 lines, which are the East Line, GTA from Denver Union Station, and also the Gold Line, which will drop to Wrigley and Arvada. Um, we had groundbreaking on August 26th with Denver International Airport, that site out there, that station. And also we've had a groundbreaking for, uh, for the Denver Union Station downtown, which was the last one. So we've got a lot going on. Uh, how, what have we been doing with Commerce City? Well, City Manager Flannery and I have, I have had several meetings. Some were not fast tracks related, but related to a recent bus survey that we've, uh, that we've done throughout this county. And all the municipalities, we sent out over 73,000 of questionnaires to people throughout the county and municipalities asking about the current bus service and where they go to and where they'd like to go to, and maybe where they want us to go to. Just kidding, not that. And, uh, and we've got the results of those back. We are completing and making a presentation in Brighton area on November the 9th, and I have an executive summary regarding the Commerce City side where we are that. We'll get that from Mr. Flannery and then maybe report to you in the distant future about where we are with bus survey on that. Uh, we also, uh, had an interesting conversation, uh, Mr. Flannery and I, about next tracks and where we are with next tracks, which is, uh, which is quite a ways off when you're trying to deal with fast tracks now and get this and that, and we're talking about next tracks. But we're trying to, um, trying to work with a municipal mentality at RTD and Grizzly, who've pushed in the last year or so with different municipalities, about getting us to start thinking about where you're thinking about. I had a meeting today with folks from Gordon and Brighton saying that 2004, when the voters approved the fast tracks, uh, Gordon and Brighton and those communities were thinking about their stations, where they want them, how the buses were going to run, and with our team mentality. We don't do that because we've got to go through the EIS program, and there's certain portions of that in that, and that's where we start thinking about it. But we're trying to change that, and we are working at changing that and talking about next tracks and what's going to happen the day that next tracks comes along and we find the funding, not only for fast tracks, but for next tracks too, and the way that, the way the station's going to be and where they're going to be. So I want to ask some questions about this. Pie in the sky stuff, we can talk about that later on. So we have been talking with the new staff and talking about current things and future things. I'd like to introduce Mike Turner. Mike Turner is our, um, I'm going to give him a title. We're going to call him the Project Planning Manager of the North Metro. Uh, if that isn't right, we'll probably change the title in the morning. But, uh, Mike, Mike has, has some municipal background with work for different municipalities. He's a world, wasn't he, years ago? For Aurora, so he understands about municipalities, and his job is to be the planning of the North Metro line and especially where all these stations are going to be and how these stations are going to come together. He's going to give us an update on the North Metro line. And also, uh, your, the station in your community, which is 72nd, you have a lot of questions, and we'll talk about anything you want to talk about. Questions, money, prayer. Mike?
Thank you, Noel. Uh, Mayor, members of council, thank you for the opportunity for us to provide you with an update. I have two-part program here. One will be a fast tracks update at the moment in Denver, and then I'll focus real specifically on the North Metro and the 72nd Avenue Station. I think most of you know that, um, the fast track plan is a, is a rapid expansion, a rapid transit expansion mostly. The orange lines here in the north part of the metro area are commuter rail corridors, which the North Metro is on. This is east corridor going out to airport. This is the North Metro corridor. This is the northwest rail corridor. This is the Gold Line corridor. Uh, this is the west corridor that's currently under construction. Now it's a light up corridor. This is ITQ5, which connects with the existing 72nd Line, the, the, the extension. And then part of fast tracks are two extensions, one for the southwest line and one for the southeast line. So a lot of fast tracks actually is, is under construction now. Um, some of the US 36 bus route, the transit corridor, Phase 1 elements have already been completed. And as I just mentioned, the west corridor is currently under construction. If you ever get out in that direction, there's lots of, lots of activity going on in the west corridor. Up Liquid are being completed in about 2013. There's also a lot of, uh, construction at Denver Union Station, which is actually, as I said, is our hub for the fast tracks program downtown. Uh, east corridor, starting, Comcast started, as Noel just mentioned, and Gold Line and our western, Westminster, a portion of that would begin in 2011. Noel mentioned something about the Eagle P3 measures to time it. I think I'll skip this slide and go on to talk a little bit about, because a lot of people have a lot of questions regarding about uh, future funding strategies for the fast tracks program. There are a lot of federal grant opportunities. They're actively applying for a number of those, uh, as we skipped, the bus facilities, urban circulators, and fuels programs. And the TIGER, TIGER acronym is referred to generating economic revenue in the first case and greenhouse gas emissions reduction in the second. There's another very large Sustainable Communities Regional Planning Grant, Dr. Cox, Regional Council of Governments, I think, put together. We've applied for a lot of these. We did succeed in getting a number of them. However, they are a funding source we're trying to look at now in the future. Um, I'll talk a little bit about our construction-ready, finance-ready committees. But there is also another government partner in the New Starts program, which is where we can get some federal monies for, as I said, New Starts. And those rules are coming up for review very soon. We've pulled together a number of local municipalities and trying to get their comments on how we might strategize ourselves to better compete for those kind of grants. Because those are very competitive, lots of other transit agencies across the country are going after those things. Uh, we recently redid the ridership on the North Metro. Uh, we've had a lot of updates to the volume and found that we have a lot more ridership that's available in that quarter, which would position us, I think, a little bit better in the future, perhaps, depending on the rules our four, four to answer. Our construction-ready task force is what, is basically what that means is that we try to get our projects ready to go with all the planning, environmental work, and analysis that goes into what those orders cost and what needs to happen to get them constructed. So that when we do get funds available, we can take advantage of, whilst currently a favorable bidding environment, but we also, the sooner we get them in construction, uh, the sooner we can lower what would be inflation impacts if they were built. Basically, the idea is to make sure that we can break down as soon as the funding comes in. Some of the ideas behind that would be to perhaps construct shorter segments rather than entire quarters, depending on how much money does come in, or different kinds of build packages, design build or advanced design in one quarter, or a different return method, or any kind of combination. So we're looking at not only getting all that information together, but setting out that contracting process in the future so that we can respond as quickly as we can. Uh, the only thing I want to say about this slide is what I mentioned about the New Starts program. Once those rules are in place, which we think might be later this year or early next, we'll be able to determine whether the end of the fast track scores in the North Metro might qualify for some of those things. So some of the most important of what we're doing, Noel mentioned the Eagle P3 project that was placed in August. And we are currently, RTD's currently updating the financial plan to see what kind of funding might be left over out of that contract, how that might be applied for any remaining quarters. Once we get that information, and as you mentioned, the board, we'll be looking at some of those possibilities. I don't know, whatever, I'm meeting, uh, and we'll have all the information that we'll come back and talk about if you want. But we have some ideas about how the money might be spent. The board would go and talk to stakeholders such as yourselves and other cities and counties and other, other interested parties through an October to December timeframe and find out what other, everyone else thinks maybe that we could accomplish with some of the remaining funds. And then later on, the end of the year, they'll take some action on how we afford with that. And the annual program evaluation results would then be presented over next year, uh, resulting in whatever the recommendation would be at that point. We get questions all the time about whether, or, you know, if we're going to go out for an industrial tax initiative. The board decided not to do that this year. Uh, there's still some discussion about whether it makes sense to go out next year or 2012. If we did go out in 2012, assuming a 0.4% increase at that time, it means that our 27, our original 2017 program would be able to be built by 2019. However, delaying it until 2012 costs more. It's just the inflation part that makes the program costly to go out. The downside of not having a successful vote or not going out for a vote is assuming no additional tax revenues, the program would then be completed, would be completed until 142. So I talked a little bit about some of these kind of funding strategies. I'm going to skip this slide also. Um, here's the overall implementation schedule, assuming a 2019 finish date. And you can see that the North Metro is right about here, where we think that the environmental culinary work will be done and construction will start in that sort of 2013 timeframe. Uh, before I move on to the North Metro, I want to stop here to see if you have any questions about just the overall program elements that we have that either Noel or I could, could, uh, before you want to, or ask, uh, I'm sorry, answer, or can we go to the court or check?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Noel, for coming tonight and, uh... You know, there's a lot of, there are a lot of projects underway right now. I just want to, why are we the last one to come up?
Originally in 2004, when we were put on the schedule, that was really what was negotiated at that time. The schedules have not changed at all as far as the start times and those types of things, as far as the East and, and, but what has happened is that Congress has gone there. There is enough sales tax to complete the whole project. So there were some, there were some cards that met the FDA standards for New Starts, and ridership numbers were there, that we can get a billion dollars from the FDA. We can get a billion dollars from, uh, from a pilot program with the concessionaires to build. Originally, this, this thing was to cost $4.9 billion. Our bond capacity, correct me if I'm wrong, my drop's about $2.9 billion right now, $4.9. And that's how much we have. We had to obligate all the funds from the original sales tax increase of 4 tenths of a cent to do this project with the gold and the line coming out to 72nd and, and, uh, and PEGES and also to the, we had to obligate all that money. There, there just isn't enough sales tax revenue as there was five, six, and seven years ago. We've always been on the end of it. Uh, we always worked to be done. Uh, everything was to be done by 2017. Uh, if we get a funding source, uh, I think the worst scenario probably would be 2019. It would be the worst. And I will, I will tell you this, I hate when they put up that 4 tenths of a cent because we don't know what we're going to have to go back to the voters. That is crap when they put that number up, and I hate that number. Uh, just recently, the state of New Jersey turned back $3 billion. Was it FPA? Turned back $3 billion to FPA because they can't come up with their share of monies to do a project in New Jersey. Done that back. Uh, we were on the horn the next day talking about, we could use $3 billion. We could use $2 billion. We could use a billion dollars if they want to do that. We're going to be construction-ready on all our projects. The only thing that's holding us up is, is not the process. What's holding us up is the lack of retail sales taxes to do that. If, if there's more, I believe, I really do believe this, and maybe I'm not optimistic, I don't know. I really do believe that there's going to be federal monies in the next year or two, uh, that, that the program will have to, have to put in projects like this that are construction-ready and will throw tens of thousands of jobs to people, and they're going to have to put some money into that. I think that there are some current, uh, taxes that are going to sunset in the metropolitan district that possibly could be extended towards fast tracks throughout the metropolitan area, like a less than a third for a sales tax increase down the road. And then whatever that number is, 1 tenth of a cent, 2 tenths of a cent, 3 tenths of a cent, we need to figure out the details of what has to back the voters. And that'll probably be 11 or 12, somewhere in there. I don't think we can go 11 or 12. We have to go by 12.
The original sales tax increase was 0.4% what?
0.1 cent was for the fast tracks, some of the construction of that.
And we're all, everybody in this room is making that sales tax?
Yes.
What do you project that the, uh, the increase will be that you're going to ask for in 2011 or 2012?
I, I would, I would say that the worst possible scenario, I'll give you the worst number, Councilman, that would be 4 tenths of a cent. That would be the worst number that would have to back it. I think the number can be a little bit less.
I know, you know, a couple of months ago, we had a presentation to Dr. Cox. And last year, a similar presentation, um, built into the calculations, you know, where there was a 4% annual increase per year in sales taxes. Dr. Cox described that as insanely optimistic. Now this year, the projection is falling down to 3.4%. The thing is, I'm questioning is, I don't know how you can project any increase in sales taxes at all, given, you know, the present state of the economy. And of course, if, I guess if November 61 passes, we're looking at maybe 2045 or anything this one half. Is that about right?
If, if, um, 61 passes, we'll never build fast tracks. We will never, we can't do it in 10 years. We can't fund it in 10 years. Let me, let me, let me give you, I wasn't on the board until 2007, okay? So I can't explain what happened in 2004. Let me tell you my guess of what happened, and I'll do it in my latest terminology. Um, they had, they had a project that they thought they could work in the metropolitan area, and, and every time they would have to talk to somebody what they wanted in different municipalities, counties, and those types of things, the project kept getting margin and margin and margin. And the only way to, to make a, a project viable is to make sure that the, the amount of, of money that you have coming in matches that expenditure that you're going to have in capital project. And I really believe that, to, to, I don't believe that they lied to the public, I don't believe that. I believe that they believe that they could bring in over 6%, 7% a year in, uh, in, in sales tax increases. And that's the number that they gave people in, in 2001, 2004. And I really, I really think that they really believed that that was going to happen, and we weren't going to go into this recession. But then the recession came along and things got really, really bad. And this board, currently on there right now, said those numbers are not even realistic. So what we did is we went back and got some folks that, uh, that, that work with, with dogs and where the economy is going, and we reduced those numbers. I think they're like 3.58, something like that right now. But we reduced that around there, so we're really trying to be very, very conservative on sales tax projections. And, and, and the people that we, that we brought in from the outside weren't paid by us, they had no financial obligation to us, and they agreed, they agreed that the numbers are probably pretty valid, and, and they could, they could support those numbers. Whether this happens or not, I don't know. Hopefully, the economy will get better and things get better. But we believe that the current numbers we have now are conservative, and that we can make that, and we can make that. Hopefully, hopefully, the economy will start to fall back.
Thanks, Cindy. You know, don't get me wrong, I'm all for this, whatever turns out, we all vote for it, so.
Well, you think I was asking a question? I'm not afraid of anything. I'll tell you what, my gut feeling is, and we're not. I think the board, the board is not ready to go to 2011. Uh, the board is not ready to go in 2012. But the board's going to have to get off their teescurt in the early part of the first quarter of next year and make some decisions. But we've got some private folks out there, not paid by us, out there, low-end business people, that have polled folks, and everybody out there wants fast track. It's like in the 7%. They want it tomorrow. And I understand that I would build it tomorrow if I had the money, but I don't have the money. But they're afraid of their jobs, they're afraid of, they're afraid of losing their jobs, whatever money they have, the expendable money, they're keeping it in the house or they're keeping it in the venture, keeping it in someplace because, because they're worried they're going to keep their jobs in that. They, they also want, and we get high numbers about, about where we are with this. And then there's a lot of new people who don't even know what fast tracks are about. We've got to, we've got to rebuild those folks and get them educated what fast tracks are and go to the election. But we're going to have to make that decision whether we go next year, probably in the first quarter. Uh, when we do the, the annual, uh, project evaluation, which is, uh, what is this fast track project really going to cost? We do it every year, and we come out with those findings. We, we had some great numbers with, with Eagle P3. Um, I will tell you that the North Metro, one time, to get it done two years ago, correct me if I'm wrong, my, was about $1.1 billion to get everything done. And now we're looking at somewhere around $850 million. And we learned some things from Eagle P3, that we can use single tracks, we don't need to do double tracks throughout the place. And there's, there's some significant cost savings that we're, that we'll be able to save, about $50, $100 million here and there. So we're trying, we're doing the best we can, but, uh... So we're trying, we're doing the best we can, but we got a company to work with. We got 200 guys to work with. And we got a lot of folks that we need to get back in the vein where we can build that trust back up again and make that happen. We're trying.
Thanks for coming, Andy.
Oh, it's my pleasure.
Yes, is it possible for us to receive these two PowerPoints in the hard copy? Because in order, I mean, the last one, when we went through those timetables, went through kind of quick, but I would love to sit down and when we talk with people about fast track, when we try to educate them on the benefit of it and when it can get done and what it's going to take to get it done, to have these PowerPoints in a hard copy where we can actually let them sit down and show them the same thing that you showed us tonight?
You'll have the next one you have.
Absolutely, absolutely. And actually, if that'd be okay, you could send it electronically and we can have a whole page here. Okay, yeah, that's very helpful.
Do you want to do the 72nd Station somewhere?
Yeah.
That's what we're.
Yeah, I want to talk about your, your conversation. Go ahead.
Are you okay?
I'll save it, yeah.
Okay, he'll save it. I'm sorry. Okay. Another thing I know what Noel was saying is in addition to sales tax, I mean, we had construction costs rapidly increasing through the last couple of years. So it was kind of a double whammy effect there for us. Both of those things really contributed to some of the problems. And I think it's just a little over my nine, nine hundred minutes. You said it, I think it's like, let me, let me move on to the second, 72nd Avenue Station though, because I might be interested in. Here's the entire corridor and your station is right here. There's several other, several other stations all the way down. 162nd Avenue is the terminus. Another union station is the other end of the line here. But let's talk about this a little bit more detail. This is about a 13 acre site. This is 72nd Avenue here. This is Colorado Boulevard here. The station is set up to accommodate 330 parking spaces, both when it opens and in 2035, which is a planning horizon that we use to model future use, that sort of stuff. But this is, this is where the buses would come in here. This is where they would, these are bus pays, where they would come in, drop off people and then go back out. This is where the parking is, right here. But I wanted to point out some of the, I guess, the features of how the station got designed. 72nd Avenue will be improved so that it's currently a two-lane and each structure will be widened so that both sand gravel trucks that we use as the toilet areas we developed can accommodate, can be accommodated as well as the buses and other cars that are going in here. We're going to put in a separate pedestrian bridge so people who are going to be walking to the station don't have to face all that extractive on 72nd Avenue. There will be a new, oh, curse it after. There would be a new traffic lane at Colorado Boulevard. I'm sorry, at Colorado Boulevard and 72nd Avenue. Also, if there's a, this is the location of a future O'Brian Canal. If that's ever put in, we're going to make sure that there would be, first of all, it would be included with the construction of our station, but also so that there would be some, some other access in this general scene. This is the Fernal Trailhead right here. And as I understand it, it's the terminus of the 70th Avenue Commerce City bike route. So in this instance then, we would provide access with a huge rough connection up here. This part of the Fernal would be relocated with a bridge, with another pass here, separating both the freight track and our track. So that, so that people from both the west and the east side could access its station area from either side. This also provides an access, emergency access, although as we understand it, and I don't have an engineer here to explain this, but this would accomplish some emergency access as well as a separate sort of point. I'll make sure that I can explain everything here. The station platform would go right here. This is what we call our customary drop-off areas for people who are just going to get off who are being dropped off by, by cars who then leave and they would access the station. If the future platform then would need to expand, we would also be able to relocate this road to provide the gravel, sand gravel company access for as long as they needed it until the area was redeveloped. So that in essence is what the station looks like. That's redesigned for the EIS. Then your idea about the schedule, the final, the document on impact stage and notice of availability, which is what all these stand for, will be early next year, January 21st. We'll have a series of public hearings on February 14th to the 18th and also a 30-day common period, which is required by the Federal Transit Administration. And so we did also have, what we hope to be, will then be a record of decision, which is the final document once the EIS is completed and we move on to preliminary design and some of the other kinds of things I was telling about to proceed. And that would be available next year. Let me give you a sense of our best goals. So.
One thing too, when you come past, come past the river side, it's kind of giving you the idea of complexity in this project. As you come in that right, you have to go up in the air. How many, is it over a mile? Isn't it the same air?
It's a waste. I don't know if it's any of this, but that's.
It's over a mile. So we're sitting down right in the temple with the railroad tracks and go down on the, on the west side of Suncor and then finally get down and come into the site at 72nd. We're doing a mile in the air. So it's quite an expensive project. Once we get to 72nd, it's cake.
Well, this thing, Noel, I appreciate your candid comments on the four tenths of a cent sales increase. Just because, you know, the, the original projections were that fast tracks was going to be able to get built now with the funds that the voters approved. Obviously, no one could have projected what happened to the economy. But I think that a lot of voters now just kind of feel a little, a little mixed, you know, a couple of ways just because, you know, that there was a certain degree of a commitment made. And, and they thought that with that tax increase, they were going to be able to see that. But, you know, obviously they finished it out the way it is. So I just want to, I do appreciate your very candid comments on that.
Thank you. I agree to when your son or daughter's four years old, you say you turn 16, I'm going to buy you a racing car. It sticks in their mind. That's what we told the voters in 2004. You're going to have this in 2017. And then when that kid turns 16, the economy goes to the tank. Mom has to go tell that son or daughter, you know, it's not in your cards, it's in his heart. They don't remember what you told them first time. But I think we have, we have an education process that we're going to have to do with the voters that were here before 2004. And we have to re-educate a lot of other people that are here right now that don't understand what fast tracks are about. It was obligated to 2004 and what it would be. So we've got a long way to go. It's not going to be easy. And I think if we continue to work together, we will get this thing done by 2020. We have to get it done by 2020. I think it's very important, I want to tell you this one point too. Remember the night, they're going to come back to us and they're going to tell us, there's a, there's a $300 million savings on, on the, on the Eagle B3 project. That's a lot of money. And, and I don't want to, I told the staff this, I'm only 115. Don't pin one car against another car for $300 million. That is a long thing to do and we should not do that. I would really have a problem with it and probably need all your support if the voters on the, on the board directors, which I don't believe that they would want to give that to one car. And that would be a long thing to do. That money needs to stay there. And we don't know if that's a total saving yet or not. This thing is going a long way to get it done. We need to hang together and keep all the cars together and we'll get this thing done.
Okay, here are comments, questions.
Mr. Mayor, kind of ask about your, sure, Mr. Bus. What are the, what's the possibility or chances that the 72nd Station would be built and that be the end of the line for period?
That could be a possibility. If there was, without letting the cat out of the bag, I'm not going to complicate it, but if we could look at some, some sales taxes that are currently going to be sunsetted and, and a very, very small, very, very small sales tax increase, I know I can get it as far as the, I would take this, if I was in the former city position right now, I'd be smiling. You're going to get your station. In the worst possible scenario, you're going to get your station. The people from the north, that's the hard part, is getting the rest of the money to make that happen. You're sitting in a very, very good position. Uniform or mayor of the town, it's tough for me to say that. But bottom line, that's the truth. And I think you're in a very, very good position. I think if anything, if they were to do anything and come up with a lot of some around money, Mr. Flannery, you have a 1/10 of a cent and maybe the extension of a, of a current thing, we've got to get it at least at 88. You're, you're, you're sitting in a very good position. Am I right, Mike?
No, I, no, we talked about, you know, I, as a planner, it's hard for me to say that absolutely. And I know Noel's is, you know, very, obviously, because I've discussed this. We talked about 72nd and 88, or some of the extensions that we've looked after this quarter. We really just won't know until we know exactly what the money works like, exactly how it pans out back on stuff. And that's part of what we're talking about on the very night. And that's part of what the board of planning decided and a prior evaluation for the next year. So, but I think, I was in the city council, this is true on work at Aurora, this is being sort of the key and the source of information for a lot of, a lot of your residents and constituents. So it's in our interest, obviously, to have, you have the best information so that you can also pass it on to, to your constituents as well. So we're happy to provide whatever you need to, to explain this to folks. So I will make that sort of request right now, that we'd be happy to come back, bring other people back, get everybody the information you need so that everybody is really informed. That's the important part of what we're trying to.
I think we put it with suicide, 72nd. We lose right, we lose store, we lose, I just kind of lose everybody, I don't think. This board, I will tell you, this 15-member board is focused on getting this whole thing done and not piecing it. Even if we have to go out for the whole four tenths of a cent. And we've got to be, we've got to get this whole thing done. We just can't pieced it up. It's crazy. We will put one car against another and we will destroy partnerships and relationships that we've built with everybody. Foolishness, political suicide. I wouldn't want to be a part of it. I will not be a part of it.
Very much. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming.
Have a happy holiday.
Hey. One of the nice parts about being able to get out on Channel 8, because people were here, that they were here, they can actually go out and just next to this and kick their part if that's what they want to see. Just kind of trying to fill the time. Mr. Flannery, we're now going to do a presentation on Boys and Girls Club and.
Yes, sir. I'm going to have.
We have some digital.
Darrow will, will introduce you. Kick this off and.
Okay. Assistant Project Director, for sir. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Would like to introduce right now, Mr. John Regoney to start the presentation of the Boys and Girls Club Protection Committee.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Well, if you're hearing okay, great. Mayor Tal, city council members, city staff and members of the audience. I know many of you, but for those that haven't met, I'm John Regoney, with the Boys and Girls Clubs of Metro Denver. Please to be here this evening to speak with you about the work that our Commerce City Boys and Girls Clubs Stakeholders Committee has been doing to plan expansion in the core of Commerce City. Now, for those that haven't seen this yet, the mission of the Boys and Girls Clubs of Metro Denver is to inspire and enable all young people, especially however, those from disadvantaged circumstances to reach their full potential as productive, responsible and caring citizens. Now, by way of background, the topic of strategic growth was addressed directly by the Boys and Girls Clubs strategic planning process that began for us back in 2006 and culminated in the passage of our plan in 2009. The final version of that plan included a specific target to serve more children here in Commerce City. And for those of you that have been here a while, those plans were put on hold due to a lot of factors, but not least of which was the recession. The Boys and Girls Clubs opened a scaled-down club at Kearney Middle School in November 2007. And gosh, that's hard to believe, that's already three years ago. The program has been very successful and currently serves 150 students each day. Our doors are open after school on Friday nights and during the summer. Current funding for the program comes from our friends at Mile High United Way, of course, the Boys and Girls Clubs of Metro Denver, the good people of Suncor Energy and our friends at Adams 14. Adams 14 also provides the facility and the support services at no charge to this entire operation again, for their help and support and largesse. Now, the youth that attend the Commerce City Club at Kearney sadly are considered at-risk youth. Most urban youth experience external influences on their wives that place them in great risk of being unsuccessful in school and in life. And if you take a look at this slide, the things that are most disturbing, of course, are the high percentage of kids under the age of 18 that live in poverty, sadly low graduation rate, high number of students eligible for free reduced lunch. And then a disturbing fact about, you know, young females giving birth. These are very troubling, of course. And when we look at the Kearney Club participants, the demographics mirror those of the youth in the core part of the city, especially around the area of poverty. You see that high percentage of free reduced lunch participants. So what do we provide for the disadvantaged youth in our community here in Commerce City? Now, I think it's very important to say that the Boys and Girls Clubs are not just after-school hangouts. The clubs are places where youth come to learn, they do their homework, they develop social skills, they express themselves creatively and yes, they participate in sports. The clubs are staffed by full-time professionals and located, as you know, in neighborhoods where they're needed the most. Now, there are four simple things that distinguish the Boys and Girls Clubs and therefore the kind of program and services that we provide unique. First and foremost, we have dedicated youth facilities and we are open when kids need us the most and that's in their out-of-school time. We also are staffed with trained professionals and surround ourselves with part-time staff and volunteering. And we're available and affordable to all youth. The children all throughout Metro Denver and here in Commerce City pay only $2 a year to access all of these incredible services. Now, Boys and Girls Clubs offer proven programs that help youth gain the developmental assets they need to succeed in life. Members participate in the variety of programs in the following, what we call four program areas. Character leadership development, education and career development, technology, the arts, health and life skills, and sports, fitness and recreation. And in 2009, our clubs made a lasting impact on thousands of youth with thousands of hours of academic support. If you look at this slide, it's astounding to know that just our, our organization gave the kids to read an additional 31,000 books, delivered 20,000 hours of homework help. And interestingly enough, we evaluated our technology programs and found that club members' internet research proficiency, that's a good one, increased by 29%. Honestly, this is such an important skill in the 21st century. We also know that students who participate in art programs do better academically, participate more in their community and demonstrate more leadership qualities. Our clubs provide an opportunity for kids to express themselves in healthy, productive ways. I'm particularly pleased to see the number of hours that we deliver in terms of physical activity. We all know that we have too many children that are growing up unhealthy and overweight. And the leadership purpose cannot be underestimated as kids will honorize and reach their full potential. We also provide team sports and education programs about healthy lifestyle choices. And this is where we're working directly with the kids to help them avoid tobacco, alcohol, drugs and sadly enough, gangs and yes, will start to make better choices and avoid getting pregnancies. Significant numbers of hours dedicated to those who care for their areas. Now, when we talk about helping at-risk or disadvantaged kids succeed in life, we mainly help them succeed academically and go on to graduate and become productive members of our community. Three things that we look for when we're discussing reasons for students dropping out of school are attendance, behavior and academic success. This is very interesting. The, the results for more than 400 members of our Kearney Club here in Commerce City are quite astounding. One, as you can see, the, the club members attend school more. We've had no serious discipline problems with the kids and very exciting. The average grade point, average DK for the middle school club members is significantly. The average grade point average of GPA for the middle school club members is significantly higher than the GPA across Adams 14 middle schools. We've only been here three years, but together we are making a real difference in the lives of the kids and their future success. Well, we tell you all these positive things about the success of Commerce City and Kearney because we're here tonight to ask you to support the next phase. And that next phase is right behind you, expand our operations here in Commerce City. The stakeholder group that you saw listed earlier, we meet on a regular basis, and you know, one of those simple analysis things that you do, you sit back and say, gosh, what are the pros and what are the cons of this kind of expansion? Well, quite frankly, we were hard pressed to come up with too many cons. I mean, the real issue here is that we can, by expanding our capacity to serve more kids in Commerce City, create a better community, we can increase community delinquents, we can improve academic success for the children. You know, there's financial commitment currently to the partners, which is a very strong indicator that many, many people believe and will be doing supportive. And there is an exciting opportunity at this stage of development to consolidate nonprofit partners under one group. The cons, which are really not cons, have more to do with opportunities, and that's, you know, finding the right leadership here in Commerce City to support this long-term, and not avoid committing to the city and other stakeholders so we can pay for this thing over the long haul. Now, the central idea that the stakeholder group is considered for Commerce City is an expanded center that will allow to consolidate services under one group, and there are numerous benefits for this model. More efficient use of space, certainly programmatic synergy between nonprofits under one space, some stable facilities costs for all those partners, and possibly, depending upon who's living under the roof, revenue streams that could offset some of the facilities maintenance costs. This is being done in other cities around the United States and in similar parts of the metropolitan Denver. Now, what is required to become a partner in this endeavor? That's a very good question to answer, and quite frankly, all those that are written together in a synergistic fashion need to have some alignment around their mission. Quite frankly, it's not that you could have services to adults and children growing up under the same roof unless the building was designed specifically to accommodate that. Organizations all need to be financially sound and well-managed, and the services need to be compatible and specifically needed by the community, and then, of course, there needs to be certain compatible spaces. The nice thing is that the stakeholder group in talking about this realizes that all of this, yes, all of this is available right here in Commerce City. Now, at this point, we turn everything back over to Ms. Darrow to ask a few of our partners to tell you about the benefits of supporting a Boys and Girls Club expansion in Commerce City.
Thank you, John. Mayor, members of the city council, I would like to call up Maria Gonzalez, representing Community Enterprises of Commerce City, and also speaking for partnerships for healthy communities, both are nonprofits here in the community.
Good evening, Mayor, the council. Thank you for the opportunity to share the vision of improving the quality of life for our community, our future residents and our current residents. I'm going to read a letter on behalf of Mayor Weaver. She is the executive director of Partnership for Healthy Communities. Unfortunately, she wasn't able to be here. Partnerships for Healthy Communities wholeheartedly supports the idea of shared space for nonprofit agencies in Commerce City. As a part of two-year strategic funding, we are in the process of identifying potential spaces and have been working with Community Enterprise to identify key agency partners. Partnerships for Healthy Communities supports the idea of a shared space for nonprofits in conjunction with Boys and Girls Club. It would be a tremendous asset for the entire community. In regards to what comes from Community Enterprise and the presentation of the board and the community as a whole, I think this is the best opportunity that we have to view partnerships. We've been talking about partnerships for many different things. We had the Run a couple of weeks ago, it was a great partnership effort. Everybody enjoyed it. I think this is a great opportunity for us stakeholders looking to the potential of bringing together all everybody's assets and resources and collaborations. This is a positive thing that will happen in our community. This is vitality, this is the future. We need to leverage the opportunity for new existing partnerships, looking at what is what we have and what can we make the best and effective without limiting ourselves with the existing resources that we have. I think the message that the city has about the community of the public community goes a long way in the support that we have from Community Enterprise and Partnership for Healthy Communities. This is the best moment to take advantage of this opportunity. So I really, on behalf of Community Enterprise, I really like to support this idea of shared space and to benefit the entire community and really take advantage of the right investments and right missions right now. Thank you very much.
Thank you, the council. I would like to invite now Leisha Burnett, who's the senior communications supervisor at SunCor.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor Tal, members of the city council. Leisha Burnett with Communications and Stakeholder Relations at SunCor. And I just wanted to give you guys a little bit of background on how we've been working with the Boys and Girls Club to date, and let you know why we're so supportive of this project and the expansion. As you may or may not know, SunCor Energy, we are a company that is truly committed to community investment in all of the communities where we have operations. And as you know, we're a Canadian company, but we have our headquarters here in Denver in the U.S., in Denver, with our office down in Orchard Falls in the Tech Center, but we have our refinery right here in Commerce City. So it's really important across our whole enterprise at SunCor that we contribute to the communities where we have large operations and impacts to the city because we know that we can make an impact on making our communities better. And so what does that look like, and what does that mean? For SunCor, it's about a triple bottom line. There's three things that we look for. We're looking at community investment, and we feel that this project fits so many of those. We look at the environment, environmental impacts, obviously. We're a refinery, we deal with impacts in the environment, we want to minimize those. But also, we look at education in the community, starting operations, and health and well-being, and we truly feel that this project fits that strategic mission that we have at SunCor. We've been supporting at SunCor the Boys and Girls Club for more than four years. Here in Commerce City, we've been actually supporting the operations of the current facility to the chain of about $100,000 per year to help with this operating fund. And we'll continue to do that, we have it in the budget for next year. In addition, our employees really take a lot of pride, and they do take the whole commitment to community and investment in the community to heart. Our employees are very generous with our time and their money in giving to the communities where we live and we have operations. So they do take a lot of pride in having opportunities to contribute their time and their money on volunteer causes, and I know that that will continue moving forward with this project, moving forward with the expansion. SunCor, clearly, we are excited about this project, the opportunity. You've heard about it from John and from others who have spoken, this is a great opportunity for so many people, companies, nonprofit, public, private, to come together and truly collaborate to make a difference in our community. There's a true need. The current facility at Kearney is at capacity, and we don't want to continue to turn kids away. We want to help and provide a club that will provide the needs and their demands. We are committed at SunCor to $1 million to donate to help kickstart and get this project going, and we want to do that, and we want to help with the campaign in that way. And just on a personal note, I'd like to say, you heard John talk about where the kids who go through the Boys and Girls Club end up later in life. If you've ever been to the Youth of the Year program that the Boys and Girls Club holds one year, you see where these children and where these kids and these teenagers go in their life, and they are going to high places. And they attribute where they are going and where they have come from to the Boys and Girls Club. And I think there are kids in Commerce City and in this county and in our community that we could be seeing up there. So I think a couple of years ago, we had a person from where the club's in, City of Denver, who made it all the way to the National, and she won Youth of the Year for the whole country, and I think that's just a testament for the Boys and Girls Club in Orchard Denver is actually committed to doing for our youth here. So SunCor Energy is playing on board. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Leisha. I'd like to call to the mic our district attorney, not quick.
Thank you. I know it's a little hazardous having an attorney being a speaker just like my head. I feel in some ways I'm already preaching to fire because I've spoken to most of you about these issues concerning our communities and how we can better our community. And I want to talk a little bit on a sense of pure economics because I know under the recession, that is deciding back towards the private and healthy sector. So I could spend two minutes talking to you about that. And research shows us that the highest period of juvenile crime is not at night, it's actually four hours, between three and six period, all juvenile crime except Texas, all picture, and those three and a half hour period. And so what that means is if these kids are quality, you're not going to find a better quality after-school program than Boys and Girls Club. If you can reduce that juvenile crime, well, we've done well in the county over the last six years. We've reduced juvenile crime about 30% since we started the youth initiative and started partnering with Boys and Girls Club, which I think is very significant. How does that play out for you? Every kid, the highest risk of going to Department of Corrections in this high school dropout, 68% of the inmates in DSC have one thing in common, they never graduate from high school. And so when you look at programs like Boys and Girls Club that has such success and having kids carry their high school, the impact is significant because every kid that drops out of high school costs the community an extra $200,000, that's the social service cost and corrections cost. And so that's the money that officers are paying in their community. But I can tell you the ripple effect of this economy is significant. When I went to the University of Colorado, I paid $700. My son now pays $9,000, believe it, I did, $9,000 a year in tuition. And why did that happen? Well, what happened is from the early 80s, Department of Corrections was only 3% of the state budget, it's now 9% of the state budget. And because of the way the state budget is created, it's created, it's very cheap thing that has lack of protections. A-12 is protected by 23, there's only protection. So we could squeeze out over and over again this higher education and some of the programs that really make a difference in these people's lives. And so I want to tell you that first of all, as a district attorney, I strongly support, and I know it's tough in these economic times, and I'm delighted to hear SunCor stepping up to the table for $1 million to tell you that whenever I might have asked the district attorney if I need to go to community groups or if there's additional corporate sponsors to talk about, that this makes sense, and not just in the sense of CMTS, but in the sense of SEMCE, and it makes sense in dollars, and it also makes sense in good policy to invest early in these kids' lives. And that's another thing that I was going to tell you, I'm happy to provide the research and social support applied, and earlier investment in kids' lives, that every hundred is for a community. And so it's great to have truancy programs in high school, and it's great to do interventions, but those are tough, tough dollars to put in because you really want to have the impact on the community, invest early, invest in kids, and most of all, invest in programs that will work.
Thank you.
I mean, you do have one of the best city attorneys in the entire state. I know Mr. Darrow, 20 years. And I'm not looking for a job, I'm not, I'm just wanting to say that...
Mr. Darrow, approve this contract.
Mayor, members of the council, at this point, I'd like to call up to the board, our very young chief buyer.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, average city council, we're in Washington City, attorney of Commerce City. I'd like to talk to you really in two facets. One capacity is to co-chair the Adams County Youth Initiative, and I'm very fortunate to sit on this board with Chris Gennassi, who's the superintendent, and also with the district attorney. And actually, this is the third meeting we've had today. I feel like we should be sworn in as a district attorney meeting later on. But anyway, I come to you as the co-chair of the Adams County Initiative. That was a federal grant that we received a few years back, a total of $8 million. We've since received another $2 million for business training. But this initiative is helping Commerce City. It has helped our kids last summer through summer camps. I think a number of you went to the elementary school to see the program there. It will have a definite impact on our crime. This is just another partnership. If you were here three years ago, but I had the opportunity to talk to you about the strategic plan for the police department, and how we need to move forward and create those partnerships with other law enforcement, with the district attorney's office, with business people, with the schools, this is it, city council. This is what we're doing. If we're going to be successful, if we're going to have an impact, a positive impact of the children in this city, our youth, this is the chance to do it. There's nothing greater. I've talked about community partnerships and business partnerships and partnering with the schools, it's all about community policing. The police department can't do it all by ourselves, neither can the schools, but together we can have a tremendous impact. And the numbers that the district attorney gave you are absolutely true. This is another program that affords us the opportunity to create friendships, to change, make a very positive change in children, the youth of our city. I grew up here, as a child, I went to Derby, the only place I could play baseball was at the Diamond. The Diamond is still there, although there's no more, there's not a softball field anymore, but it was a great place. I remember being a great baseball player here. But we can have better facilities here, and we have great facilities. But if we can partner and exchange energy and share our knowledge and the assets that we have, we can make tremendous strides here. This is a great opportunity for us, and certainly the more frequent contacts, the more positive contacts we have with citizens and children as police officers, the better off it will be. We will not be contacting these children. These children, in criminal justice, in a criminal justice sense, it'll be more of a friendship and partnership sense, and that's what we need to do. My philosophy here with the department has always been, we don't want to be law enforcement, we want to be, we want to create those partnerships, we want to prevent crime, we don't want a high crime rate, we don't want to be arresting, we don't want to arrest kids. We want to make sure we have positive impact and create positive influence for our children. You know, one of the concerns that we talked about this morning was over-representation of minorities in the criminal justice system. This is about youth, and this is one way to give us leverage to positively affect this. We see too many minority kids that end up in that system, and the underlying statistic there, and the DA mentioned this morning, is failure to graduate from high school. If we can keep these kids in school, if we can keep them out of gangs, avoiding for any kind of criminal activity and involved in sports, we just heard all the statistics on how their grade point averages are higher, I could go on and on. I support this, this is one of the best programs, it's going to blend beautifully with the program we're going to have with Parks and Recreation on our new federal grant, the Epic Grant. We're already working with the schools, Parks and Recreation, creating police athletic leagues, all this. So it's wonderful, I'm very excited about it, please support it, I know you will. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mayor, members of council, I would like to bring up Dr. Steve Chambers, President of Adams 14 Schools.
Good evening, now, Mayor Tal and members of the city council. I'm Steve Chandler, I'm the superintendent of Adams 14 Schools. And our district has resource-type form of schools and type-formy communities, and these schools and communities offer extended day and extended school years for their youth. And this is what the Boys and Girls Club does for the youth in our community through summer school programs and after-school programs. We have worked closely with the Boys and Girls Club on their evaluation of their program, and we have found, as you have seen tonight, that these students' attendance is higher than the typical student attendance, that their grade point average is higher, and that there are few or no discipline incidents that occur with the students that attend the Boys and Girls Club. So we support the Boys and Girls Club, and we look forward to the partnership with them and their expansion. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I would like to invite up to the podium, Mr. Arda Man, from the Mile High Highway.
Good evening, mayor, members of the city council. I think what I would do is primarily reiterate what's been said, but let me tell you about it real quickly. I oversee the work that Mile High United Way does, and few other programs and services. I got the opportunity to... Am I close, okay? Okay, if you can't hear me, let me know. I've had the opportunity to work with Boys and Girls Clubs for over three years. Mile High United Way has supported the Boys and Girls Clubs since approximately 1964. sixty-four. Boys and Girls Clubs is a big premier in that area providing new services in Metro Denver. Across the county area, they're reaching approximately nine thousand students. Boys and Girls Clubs along with Adams County School District Fourteen and Mile High United Way is a premier partner in our lights on after school initiative. Lights on after school is about providing school-based after school programs in three counties in Metro Denver, well, two counties, Jefferson County, Denver, and here in Commerce City. Uh, I would tell you that Boys and Girls Clubs, their program is recognized by the National Dropout Prevention Center at Clemson University as being the best practice in reducing the dropout rate, uh, nationally. They have a program. People have talked already about the results, I can only tell you that we see the results. Boys and Girls Clubs, they're able to do it currently, they have the students that have better attendance, uh, they have, they see that score. I would say one other thing, there's a, there is a line regarding school attendance. School attendance of ninety percent or better is critical to students achieving in school. Many students who are at risk of low income overall have attendance rate that is lower than many students. As you saw on the earlier slides, Boys and Girls Clubs at Kearney and at all the other sites, they contribute to students having better overall attendance. I want to say closely that what is a great opportunity to have a partnership, such as you do between the city, Adams County, and District Fourteen, that's been a wonderful partner, a prior supplier of active programs of Boys and Girls Club. Because from where I sit and all the work I do across Metro Denver, that type of partnership that brings everyone together is so much more likely to succeed. Thank you very much and I think that was my crazy voice.
Thank you.
And for the last part of the presentation, I'd like to bring back up, uh, Mr. John Arroyo from the Boys and Girls Club.
I'm pretty, pretty humbled after listening to all that, uh, great stuff about Boys and Girls Club, so thank you very much to those that came forward to talk about what we do. Um, we're in Roswell now and the only thing that's necessary, uh, at this point in time is to talk about some tactical issues and how we can do this. It's about, uh, space and it's about place and it's about people. Boys and Girls Clubs of Metro Denver has fifty years of experience in the people side of things and we think we're, we're as good as they get when it comes to choosing wonderful, dedicated, youth development professionals to serve all of our children throughout Metro Denver. But here's what an expanded operation in Commerce City would look like, so let's talk about the place. Um, all of this is very preliminary in terms of size and so forth, but we'd be looking at a significantly larger building, larger space than we had at Kearney. Uh, the Boys and Girls Club would be sort of the stink club within that facility and given the fact that we would probably be the largest tenant in this multi-use facility, who would act as a managing partner to try to coordinate all the efforts there. Um, this next point is absolutely critical. We're currently serving four hundred and fifty children here in Commerce City and we're serving primarily one age group of children. When we work with kids, the best thing about larger facilities that attract kids from all over the, uh, the area, um, and also serve kids aged six to eighteen, is that when a child now leaves the Boys and Girls Club's Kearney, where do they go? There is not a similar program in any place else in Commerce City, but in expanded facilities, kids aged six to eighteen could come from their elementary school, from their middle school, from their high school and, uh, just receive the tremendous services and this is, you know, continuum of services that will help us work with them all the way through their, their graduation from high school. The idea of leveraging synergy and working with other nonprofits is exciting to us. Currently, in formal and informal ways, we work with about forty to forty-five of their nonprofits throughout Metro Denver, having some right there next to us, I'm just saying that gives us a chance to be talking in great detail about individual needs of children and maybe we can do a better job. Um, and also, I think we can establish a community-wide model for efficient delivery of services. This is truly an exciting opportunity. Uh, we don't have a name for this, uh, we can call it a community center, we can call it a hope center or a promise center, but a center for youth, whatever we, we choose. Now, here's a project overview that we worked on some time ago, very preliminary, but we believe that a building in this size is going to cost about four and a half million dollars. It could be less than that because building costs are certain, unless we're giving the economic certain chances that we all face. Uh, secondly, there's a need to, we begin something as large as set aside money in advance for operations, and then it's always good to see what you can do to set aside funds to move out an operation like this for weeks and, and so forth. Eleven million dollars may be close, we haven't given a number exactly, but this would be some idea of the scope of the project, but the central number right there is about four and four and a half million dollars to build a world-class facility, uh, here in Commerce City. Now, when it comes to funding, we've heard our good friends at SunCorps talk about a million dollars. Um, what we envision here is a public capital campaign and in conjunction with what will be our fifty anniversary, uh, that should include, that should include expansion in Commerce City. Uh, still has to go back to our board of directors, of course, dependent upon some of the details that we can work out with the city, uh, but I can tell you that we do believe that there's a lot of unfinished business, uh, here in Commerce City and it's time for us to get everyone more serious about what we can do to help save and change the lives of kids. And then we receive annual operating commitments from SunCorps and other community partners. Now, how would the city, uh, be involved in this funding picture? Now, the typical model for building a standalone Boys and Girls Club consists of three elements. Uh, we would ask Commerce City, uh, to commit to play a lead role in the capital campaign. Uh, there's tremendous leadership right here in this room that could help go forward and help us make contacts with, with, um, high network donors here in Commerce City as well as many, many companies that would like to get behind this kind of operation. And we would also ask for original agreement, uh, detailing in-kind services that the city could offer, uh, to support the project. And then finally, as is customary in other communities that we now serve, we'd love to respect the city to provide ongoing operational funding for this club to invest with their ability. Now, we talked about the space, let's talk about the place, uh, a little bit. Um, you know, our stakeholder group has, um, discussed various options for the place at length. Uh, we took the Kearney property off the table for a couple of reasons. First, it's a designated park, uh, it's designated as park land and it would be difficult to remove that designation. Second, Kearney, as we understand it, might be the first school to be replaced according to Adams Fourteen Facilities Plan. Uh, of course, those plans are far out in the future. We consider Prairie Gateway as an option, but it's really not, that's location. Uh, in property development, it's all about location, uh, location and location. And, um, we just absolutely have to locate, uh, this new, uh, facility for the convenience of the folks that we would be serving, uh, the kids and parents that can, can get there. Um, we consider a parcel of land on a hundred and fourth and Havana. Quite frankly, it ran below our per capita, because the land is currently in flood plan and it would be costly to bring it up to developmental state. It's a hard word to say, developmental state, I don't know how to do that. Um, and lastly, and after much deliberation, we looked at the prioritized two parcels, one at sixty-fourth and Holly, and as well as the two plus acres of Pioneer Park as a possible ideal location for the Boys and Girls Club expansion in Commerce City. Um, and Pioneer Park really is the top priority of the two. The reason for this is the park is already developed and established as a community home. It's in the midst of residential housing and it is in close proximity to multiple school sites. Uh, in short, and in closing, we would like to request that this council, uh, direct city staff to engage in formal discussions with the Boys and Girls Clubs of Metro Denver with a short-term goal of returning to you with a recommendation or recommendations of specific city-owned land that would serve this community's goal to expand the current Boys and Girls Club as part of other people here in Commerce City. Beyond that point, the next step would be to include community representation and presence within the stakeholder group that I referred to earlier, that hopefully will become the source of direction for a future funding campaign. To that end, one ideal piece of land, once the ideal piece of land is identified, we would welcome and appoint you at this body from the community to serve on the stakeholder group. Now, in closing, I'd like to thank you for having the stakeholder group here this evening for this presentation. We at the Boys and Girls Club envision a thriving community that includes positive opportunities for you, and I hope you agree that this fits squarely into the mission of Commerce City to provide a quality community for a lifetime. We've talked about this before and we're more than happy to answer any questions we have this evening, but please take serious consideration for our requests to go forward.
Yes, uh, have you considered any locations north of sixty-fourth Avenue? I know the list of sites, a hundred and four, no, that would be a little bit. You know, we have more than half of our population of this north of ninety-sixth Avenue.
I think if you recall, we were talking really about the, uh, demographics in the core city and the fact we're currently located in Kearney and serving a hundred and fifty kids a day. Uh, the location that we had recommended, uh, would be accessible and at a very close proximity, uh, for transportation purposes and would enable us to capture all the kids that are currently serving.
I understand that and nobody is questioning, uh, beneficial effect of Boys and Girls Club being a half on the young men and women, nobody's questioning that, I don't think. We should not represent the northeast of North City, like they elected me, and, you know, they're not going to be the kids coming into Kearney right now and if this Boys and Girls Club is built at sixty-fourth and Holly, how are they going to get access to that unless their parents break them down, right? It's just not fair for the people that elected me to put it in that kind of a location. There's got to be someplace, you know, maybe around ninety-sixth Avenue or even seventy-second to get, uh, north of that so that people can, from high part of town, north of ninety-sixth Avenue to get there, because this is all we get. We've got one city here. We don't have a core city, we don't have a northern enclave or whatever, we have one city. And if we build this, uh, hub where you're suggesting, it's going to cut out over half of our kids from being able to use the facility and I, I don't know.
I think simply stated, we can certainly, uh, direct the stakeholder group to continue to look at various land and we'll come back to you, we can say that we've looked at different parcels, I think. I do know that, that, um, kids and parents do find a way to get their children to the incredible programs of Boys and Girls Clubs and they come within three to four to five miles often times, uh, to do this in the after-school setting. There's also opportunities, uh, quite frankly, for some schools to transport kids, uh, the way of us, it certainly isn't that, that great a distance, I don't think. But I think we should look into it.
Yeah, if we're going to do this tonight, can we make it clear to the staff and more other sites to be looked at so that the northern, uh, children of our community are not left out? We've got one community, one city here and to build, uh, this right in the middle of the south, south part of the city is not fair to the children who live north of ninety-sixth Avenue, which are more than half the children in this community, which is more than half of our population resides right there. Uh, just hope that would be part of, uh, any direction that we give to the staff. How much money do we have in the bank right now?
Unless you're ready to answer that question to Mr. Ray?
Well, anybody that knows the answer to that question. How much money do we have in the bank right now to get this started? We don't have hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Are you asking the city how much we have in the bank?
How much does this project have in the bank right now for this project?
We have yet to decide that.
I'm sorry?
We have yet to decide that.
To decide what?
Depending on the council's direction, we have yet to decide that. If you just, if you direct us to go forward, then we would go off and do a capital campaign to raise money, or if you decided to say, we have so much in the budget to, uh, look at to contribute, then we would do what the council directs.
Uh, the question is, how much do we have right now in the bank to support this project?
The answer is zero.
Well, if you have money dedicated to it.
Well, we have a hundred and seventy thousand dollars represented for our, you know.
That's not our, that's the money that we got from the feds. So, so when you ask what we have in the bank, we have not budgeted anything, we have made preliminary commitments in the, in the past, I've done that, but.
Not necessarily from the city.
Well, that's, that's what I'm trying to get started, how much does this project have in the bank? You're saying zero? That question should be directed to this mayor of Illinois.
Yeah. Sorry, question two? How much money do you have in the bank right now to get this project started?
Um, SunCorps has transferred almost six, four million dollars to us and been sitting waiting for this question, so that's in C one, so we can break ground. Um, at least with eighty percent and not all of the capital funds are raised.
So we're still about four million dollars short.
Quite a bit, uh, sure. And, and that's the whole nature of capital campaign. These are three to five-year funding efforts, uh, pledges that are involved, individuals, foundations, corporations, and it's a, it's an effort, but it's a dual effort.
And we'd not like to see this, like, go as fast as it can and, oh, citizen handed me tonight, a copy of one of these no-on-two-eight flyers that was handed out two years ago to defeat our Boys and Girls Club issue. We would have been able to break ground, pour down, and that impacts them. And I'm just, I hope that this comes to fruition, but all I've heard so far is that, well, we're going to have a committee, we're going to talk about raising money. I hope that that happens, but it could have happened a lot quicker and it would have been paid more by people who don't even live in the city. Now it's going to be paid more by, I guess, city agencies and, uh, companies in our city. It could have been paid more by the visitors in our city.
Okay, that also, citizen wanted it, it was voted down.
It was voted down for, for, for against the Boys and Girls Club.
No, they voted against the tax.
It's the same thing, okay, it's actually the Boys and Girls Club. I wish it had passed, I wish we had Boys and Girls Club going down, but good luck, you know, I'll donate some money to it out of my personal pocket, if I need to, maybe to United Way or wherever I can do that, because I think it's a worthwhile organization. I just wish it could, I miss, uh, maybe a little more efficiently, come faster. Excellent.
This person?
Uh, first of all, I just wanted to thank everybody who came tonight, uh, to be the Boys and Children. Uh, thank you for championing the needs of our kids. Children have needs, like they tend to not have voices. The specifics you brought over tonight speak very highly of the work that you've been doing. Um, I find it all dischangeful that we don't already have this, that will be in our city. To be a city, we have to provide things for your community, uh, be it a Boys and Girls Club, be it senior center, whatever it is, the city has to have these facilities to be looked at as a true city. Um, I know we're, we're talking about grocery stores all the time and this and that, but these are the needs that cities tend to have. Um, and Jim, I have more to do with you and, and I have to say, I, I have a full agreement that the needs of our children in the south end of the, the district is overrated, that I do believe that's wrong down in the south end. I do believe that, um, working with our school districts, uh, we can provide transportation for our children's facility if we, if we are able to go forward with projects such as it is. But we can compare the children from Adams Fourteen, the children up in our cities, it's so high down there. Um, I think that we have left them long enough and if we're going to quit complaining about our children and the lack of their, um, graduation rates and this and that, and this city needs to step up and support these children and do everything that we possibly can, because analysis of the best opportunity will pay for it so far in the long run, too far, and thank you. Thank you for everything that you do for the children, because ten minutes with a child really can't change their entire life. Um, I, I just find it very sad that we, uh, that we have, that we don't have this facility. I don't know how we call ourselves a city without having something like this, but thank you.
Mr. Moore? I would defer to Mr. Moreno before I speak. Mr. Moreno.
Mr. Moreno, I, I take a look at the lists of sites that you've, uh, drawn up and I think that they're fantastic and I think each of them, this, uh, would serve very well. Has the Boys and Girls Club at all considered moving into an existing facility that may be available from the city, uh, rather than building from ground up?
Uh, if there were a suitable facility that was in the right location, that could be remodeled, that would certainly be an opportunity to look at. Uh, there's none that I admire at this point in time. Again, we have some more due diligence to do.
Sure.
For the council events and, um, said. I remember this from Councilman Benson said, "That's a great opportunity," and I live around, like, all of Denver, many of our facilities were remodeled, other facilities. What we need to look at, of course, would be the needs analysis, a good amount of progress would be part of this particular work, community center concept.
Right, the reason I ask is, it seems like the acquisition of an existing property and remodeling of it could be cheaper than building ground up, and I think we do have one of those facilities that could possibly serve that need. We have a Mile High Event Center that is currently for sale, and it's right around the number of sports teams they're talking about, you're talking about 25,000 sports facilities, 30,000, so it's very comparable, it's within the community, it's within the area that you're talking about. Obviously, that's for the task force on this side of selection to decide, but that would just be my suggestion, is to maybe give that possibility of life.
Thank you. One favor here.
In echoing off what Mr. Moreno said, when you look at the Mile High Event Center with the parking lots and all the facilities, it would accommodate fields and full facility for other nonprofits to share with, to, without sacrificing any space for the Boys and Girls Club, and in your capital campaign for building from the ground up as a standard old facility, I really do believe, when you look at it, and it will be a dime in the rough for you that you'll think, "Well, instead of spending $4 million, we could probably get this done a lot cheaper and have a facility where the city partnering with you and contributing funds, it could be done a lot quicker, and it wouldn't be a four-year capital campaign." I would, would believe we could give this down to two and a half years of promote.
Mr. Moreno?
Good evening, thanks for being here tonight, good to see you again. Just two things I wanted to add. Number one, just to reference to Councilman Benson's comments on Two Way, that was a citizens' initiative about a state tax, and in no way, shape, or form was it in any direction a no to a Boys and Girls Club. They were two separate issues, and one had nothing to do with the other one, and it was overwhelmingly defeated by the voters, so if there's any kind of message out there that that vote was a direct no to Boys and Girls Club, that's absolutely ungodly and untrue. The second thing is, having been a part of the Stakeholders Committee for a while now, as you know, I wholeheartedly support the Boys and Girls Club, and I would definitely be more than willing to take a look at insight that would be acceptable, as we have discussed over multiple meetings, and different sites, and possibilities, and this suggestion as to come up tonight is another good one to take a look at. So I'm certainly for us taking a good hard look at the best spots, as we already have had in several of our discussions, and to continue working with your Stakeholders Committee. So, thank you for everyone that's participated and for being here this evening. Thanks.
Thank you very much for your comments, I really appreciate it, and in terms of alternatives, this is a great opportunity for the city, and more importantly, for the children.
Our first one, Sun Court, you have one thing she wants to say.
Oh, please, yeah.
Sure, go on up.
Thank you, Mayor, or City Council. I also just wanted to sort of reflect on, I've been sitting here reflecting on, I had the opportunity to serve on a capital campaign for Boys and Girls Club in another city, and it's a city that's very different from Commerce City, but in some ways, the population is similar, the demographics are similar, and the city where I was, in Idaho, outside of Boise, in Garden City, Garden City, I know that town, also went through a capital campaign, went through an expansion, and I served on that campaign committee, and I just wanted to say that a capital campaign can do so many wonderful things aside from raising money. I mean, I think a lot of this thing of capital campaigns just about raising money, and that's one of the things, but the campaign that was held in Garden City, outside of the town of Boise, that helped build and expand the club for the kids in Garden City, it really rallied that whole town and that whole city, and it truly was an effort of collaboration, and it was something so positive and so moving for all kinds of members of the community, for government leaders, for state leaders, for city leaders, for nonprofits, for private enterprises. You saw a whole community rallying around that effort, around the fundraising, but it did so much for that community, so much positive, and I really think that doing a capital campaign, if you've ever been involved with one, it truly rallies so many types of people and numerous of the city and community around Commerce City. You would never know who would come out of the woodwork, and I think it would surely be something the city would be proud of.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Benson?
Yeah, I just wanted to respond to Councilman Snyder's comments about the fact that she claims that that visitors' tax had nothing to do with the Boys and Girls Club, the young children, the conditions.
Okay, about that, I...
Excuse me, I've got the floor right there.
No, but I think you're going off track now.
I'm going off track.
I think what she said, no, I think...
I was following you.
Specific wording of that initiative said that all the money is going to be used to build the Boys and Girls Club, until we're running $7 million.
Let's get some productive conversation going here. I think the question that needs to be made clear is that where we are today is important, and what happened with an election is really a periphery issue, and I think the point that was being made is that we, the city, don't want anyone that's in favor of Boys and Girls Club to construe that election as being something that is, that this city council adopts as being negative to the Boys and Girls Club. Is that a fair statement?
Well, the statement was made that that initiative had nothing to do with the building of Boys and Girls Club, and as you know, reading the wording of the initiative had everything, because the only way that that money could have been spent would have been to build the Boys and Girls Club up to the $7 million, at which time the tax would go away.
But my point is, is that we're here today, and what happened with that election is really not important except to reassure the people that are supporting the Boys and Girls Club that this council, from my observation, seems to be in favor of Boys and Girls Club.
Well, that's true, and it's just a matter of, we need to learn from the mistakes of the past, and who lies your intentions, and that's the... Mr. Bullock, anything that, I'm not through yet, you mentioned something about a Stakeholders Committee, what, or what is that, and who's on it?
I think I brought that up. Currently, the stakeholders are those that have been actively involved in the organization of the Boys and Girls Club right now, those are the folks at Kearney, those are the folks at Sun Court, those are the folks at Anderson's Team, we've had our presentation here with Council, the mayor has been involved in these meetings, so we call it Stakeholders Committee Meeting Group, but it really, it's been, it's been all of us getting together, quite frankly, to say, you know, "How can we drive this process forward and better serve the children throughout Commerce City?"
Are there Council members on this committee?
I'm not sure, yeah, because it's not a committee, or what we're saying, is that there should be someone from City Council on this? Let's do that. I mean, honestly, we really are at that point where we need to drive this process forward, really take a look at some, possibly, some other sites, but determine the site, and really work out details about how the city can get behind this and craft a capital campaign, talk about supporting the city, take it to the Board of Directors of the Boys and Girls Club, and let's get this done. I know that you want this to happen.
Are these public meetings of stakeholders?
No, no, they have not been publicly advertised, if that's what you're calling it.
I mean, can anybody from the public go to these meetings?
Sure.
How do we find out about that?
Well, have to work on that, sort of go forward and say, "Okay, we're going to have some open meetings," but there's, there's no way, is any of this meant to be exclusionary, if that's what you're implying?
No, I just, I didn't know about that, and you're saying that members of the Council go to these meetings, I wonder how late that, I couldn't write about this, couldn't, if we ever appointed anybody to be on any kind of committee.
Well, I think that we can, we can get around that particular issue, if we're going to drive this forward, and you'd like to have more people come to these meetings, that's fine. You know, no one at the Boys and Girls Clubs, or at the mayor's office, or at the school district, or at Sun Court is trying to do anything secretly or privately, we're really getting together to talk about how we could come to this group and drive this process forward, that's really all we're using time for.
Can I ask that you let the city clerk know about, schedule a meeting so that she can host those and what assault them, certain of those meetings are not open, so anybody that wants to, they are, we knew, probably, you're saying?
No, seriously.
Is it a voting committee?
No, we're just getting together, we're trying to talk about strategy and tactics and moving the process forward to, to do what we are here to do, and that's helping out serving more kids in Commerce City.
Can you do that, Mr. Bullock, and you let Mr. Moreno know?
Sure.
You should read, absolutely.
Mr. Moreno?
Oh, yes, you know, Lisa made a very good point about what it does, a capital campaign, because I've worked on it a couple of times, it raises awareness in cities, it raises cooperation, and it raises a discreet decor in your community where everybody feels like they have a buy-in and a tie-in in the final outcome of the project. But saying that, I would also like to say, if it's possible, if the council doesn't mind, I would like to make a recommendation for the staff, formally meet with the Boys and Girls Club and come back with a workable recommendation for a possible plan for expansion, if it's okay with the rest of the Council members.
Okay, my board is all the way up, we're not anyplace near that yet. Mr. Moreno?
I'll just take a free comment. I think Mr. Benson's comments about this being a club for all of Commerce City are very well taken, and I think that's something that we need to make sure happens, that every child in Commerce City has access to this facility. With that said, I think the location is somewhat relevant, I think if it is going to be a club for all of Commerce City, it's going to be available to all those kids in Commerce City. Having grown up, though, in this end of town, in this other part of Commerce City, the need is extraordinary in this community, and knowing those, knowing those kids that didn't graduate from high school, and personally knowing people that were part of that 47% that don't graduate from our schools, I think that can be mitigated and that can be absolved by, by the Boys and Girls Club, by a Boys and Girls Club that has the capacity to serve the kids of this community, and has the resources that are necessary. Maybe it's naive to say as a new council member, but I think what has happened in the past, and maybe there's some of the fun thing that has gone on with this Boys and Girls Club, isn't relevant anymore. It's not how we do, it's not a question of, "Are we going to do this?", it's where and when are we going to do it, because the kids of this community need it. I mean, I just don't think that what has gone in the past shouldn't shape any of our discussions for the future, I think we need to move forward with this project.
To add to your comments, this is the Commerce City Boys and Girls Club War, the Congress Center that we're talking about, open and affordable to all you, the only criteria is that it can be between ages of six and 18, do not discriminate based on gender, we can say affordable is $2 per year, so fees are not a barrier, this is not a faith-based organization, nor is it non-sectarian, it's not an issue, we don't discriminate on boys or girls, it's open and affordable to all kids from top to bottom of Commerce City, and I guarantee you that, that when only kids will come from all of them to access the services, it's a great thing. Regarding the capital campaign, I just want to say, Councilmen, you're absolutely so right, these are exciting, fun, great opportunities for the community to come together, we just had a similar expansion program in Jefferson County, Lakewood, and within five months, we were basically $4 million. Everyone in that community talked about it, got the model, and it was just a fantastic aspect to see how it worked and how it came together, and I know that something much, much bigger could happen here in Commerce City, not just because there's pent-up demand on the part of the kids, the need of Boys and Girls Club and access to other services, but as Councilman Benson mentioned, there's a lot of pent-up demand in this community to get this job done.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I think that, I do agree, you know, we need to have a big place that's available for all of our children across the city, north and south. I really agree with Councilwoman, I know there is a significant need, especially in the south, having grown up in the south, I know even the need in the south, and I think that one of the reasons why we were looking at Hyndeir Park or something in the southern area, being that it's close to Holly Park. Kearney, you know, is a place that we lived at very hard because of this location, you know, it's just, the children in the southern part of the city have extraordinary need, and that's not saying that the children in the north do not equal need, because of course, you know, the whole city has need, every child in the city has need, but I did think that we looked a little bit harder at, you know, possibly being close to Holly Park, something of that nature for those reasons. And secondly, I think it was about a year and a half ago, maybe two years ago, when we first started talking about Boys and Girls Club before we even came to Kearney, in our very preliminary meetings, we actually did take a vote as a council, what two council representatives would be involved in the stakeholder conversations, and it was Councilwoman Scotty Jaquely and myself that the council did appoint to be part of those preliminary discussions, that I'm sure some of you members are just, to point that out, that if there was a council vote in that discussion that had at the beginning, we talked, and that's how Councilwoman Jaquely and I first got involved with the stakeholder meetings and the preliminary discussions that came to the decisions to move it to start at Kearney. So, just to clarify for some of the newer members, that's how things have started now, Councilwoman Jaquely and I first got involved, that's how that happened, there was a need to vote in the council to get that going, so, and I also feel you just need to move forward now, come together with a plan, not worry about what's happened in the past, and just find a way to move forward and make something happen for the benefit of our children. Thanks.
And before we go into the third round, just like you had a couple of words in ed wise, when I first came to the city prior to the council, there was a group of citizens who, due to lack of money or what, had tried to put such a club on this piece of land, were looking at it, and it worked. Caused things beyond their control, they weren't able to raise the money to do that, and that land diverted back to the city. It seemed like a perfect place to put it at that time, it's looking like a good place to put it at this time. I have no objection to us looking at other sites, and for Boys and Girls Club to come back and say, "Oh, this is city land, so, you know, you're going to try to make a dollar a year, whatever the city's charged, and this piece of land, they're costing $3 million, I'm going to take it in," and we presented as that, and then we make an educated decision at that point, but I know they did not pick this quite in their heart, just out of the air, because there was a group of citizens who thought that was where it should be, and right now it's a dirt hole, I know we talked about the outdoor swimming hole in there, and, you know, I look at that and say, "Well, if the Boys and Girls Club, one ends or the other, and it's still a piece of land for that pool, then if some weird time in the future we start building thousands of homes and bringing in lots of business with sales tax, if that, you know, were needed," but right now, and that looks like great piece of land. But again, that's going to have to be something that the city decides. Mr. Bullock?
I'm going to try once again, I hope your board is still lit up, and make a recommendation, if it's okay with the rest of the capital.
Mr. Benson, did you have a comment, or can we go to Mr. Bullock?
I just had a short comment, you know, when I said that the council hadn't appointed anybody to be on a committee, a source of that information, I asked Mr. Gator about that about two or three weeks ago, and he told me that the council had never done it, and that was the basis of why I say that, but anyway, I want to back up on what Mr. Bullock is about to do, to say, we could include in there, we need to look at some properties that are a little closer to north end of town, or maybe someplace like the Dogcrack Properties, which is right on Highway Two and easily accessible, people coming down from the north. I think accessibility would be a good thing, too, not have very old, there's six people in Holly, or even Hyndeir Park, which are too far off to go back, but still, the Dogcrack Properties on Highway Two would be very accessible to anybody.
Okay, that could be one of the places that we could look at. And just one other thing, I know, there'll be all kinds of stuff, but I'm just saying anyway, Boys and Girls Club is bigger than us, it's bigger than Commerce City, it's bigger than Denver Metro, it's bigger than Colorado, it's what we do as a nation, and Boys and Girls Club in Commerce City, I don't care where you put it, it's going to have kids from Brighton, from Thornton, from Denver, from everybody showing up, they're not going everybody showing up, they're not going to be excluded. I go up, and I don't know how many of you took a chance to go up and look at the one in Brighton, a lot of those kids are coming from Commerce City, they're coming from Weld County, they're coming from everywhere, somehow the kids find a way to get there. I don't want to see this go by the wayside, because this side is getting more than this side, I'm tired of those sides. The thing is presently at Kearney, we presently have something going, you know, I don't have any problem with locating a space in the north that's cheap, and I know my church looks related to the north, and there wasn't any way we could even pick to afford it, you know, and it all comes down to that. Mr. Bullock, I would love to have you do a motion to say, have council get out there, or say, ask it out there and start doing this.
Hey, I'm going to say that again, but I want to reiterate with Mr. Benson that Malhaugh Benson is the land right across the street from the dog track, that has a building on it, that is just as accessible as a dog track at a far cheaper price, that would be easier to develop in that, so, looking at the site on Sixty-Fourth and Holly is the dog track, is what they're talking about, so that site was one of the ones that is up for consideration. But getting back to the recommendations, this is city manager, my recommendation is, if you could have staff formally meet with the Boys and Girls Club and come back with a workable recommendation for a possible land for the expansion, and if, you know, I mean, I would like to see staff do it first before it comes back and city council gives an involvement in it, and then we get into it at that point, okay? Is that okay with council?
I should ask Mr. Moreno and then look for...
I was just going to say, Mr. Bullock requires a second on that whole part of the issue.
Okay. Is that the way to do it, or do you just need to know that...
No, I think the motion is appropriate, and just for the sake of the audience and for the council, when we refer to an action item that people can sign up for, I'm talking about, or we're referring to an item that has a finality to its decision, right now, we're just appointing or directing staff to do something, it's not a resolution, it's not an ordinance, so therefore I feel it's appropriate to proceed in this manner, and this is a regular meeting, so we're not, even though it's on the agenda, it's a study item, it's still on the agenda as an item for discussion, so we can proceed with the motion directing the staff, if you can...
I have a motion, Mr. Bullock, and a second from Mr. Moreno, can I request a voice vote, or do you want to kind of go down the line?
Voice vote.
Voice vote, okay, all those in favor, since they're five, I say a aye.
Aye.
Foes the same. Motion to pass to Mr. Flannery. But Mr. Flannery, you do a wonderful job, hopefully we stay there. Okay, thank you. Anything else, Mr. Flannery, or Mr., you know, on this particular item? If you have more, I'll come on. Okay. Okay, next item, overview of the historical society, city manager, here is Flannery, invite some of the board members.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to invite Mrs. Deborah Bullock to present the slide.
Okay. Who do you think? I know you're sorry.
I sit in the floor.
I'm not there, but I don't know how to write books. I'm Joanne Stevenson, I'm the president of Commerce City Historical Society, that's our local, we love it, and we were here about a year ago, and are excited, we can do enough data on what's been going on with our historical society. So, let me just go through. We had a group that we had put together, and it was started by Deborah and Maybola, that was called United Residents of Commerce City, and it was to kind of bring the different communities of the city together, and so we, in that group, we decided to have a pioneer picnic, and we referred people, older people mostly, to the city park, and we talked out what their history is and what they did in the community over the years, and we did that, it was a great success, and then we talked more about historical things, and we decided that we would, with Commerce City, United Residents of Commerce City, very willingly and happily, decided that we should form Commerce City Historical Society, and we did that, and we put it together and got a lot of help from the attorney, Jim, or Tim Neaton from the South Atlas Water Sanitation District, and he got all our formal letters and photos for our, for what, why, see, three. Anyway, it worked. And so then, I wanted you to know that our vision is through all preservation, through all preservation activities, we will encourage all generations of the area to discover and embrace their great history and roots, we will also positively affect the image of Commerce City by actively telling her historic stories to preserve Commerce City area history. And our mission is that society will work for the past, present, and future boundaries of Commerce City, society will establish and illustrate the history of the area, its original past, its exploration, settlement, and development, its activities in peace and in war, and its growth in population, wealth, education, art, science, agriculture, manufacturing, trade, and transportation. The society will preserve such materials and make them accessible to all who wish to examine and study them, the society will cooperate with the officials to ensure the preservation and accessibility of the records and archives of the city of Commerce City, the society will seek to establish and maintain a museum for the protection, preservation, and exhibition of all such materials, the society will disseminate information to raise interest and make history of our area by publishing historical material in newspapers or elsewhere, by holding meetings, arranging lectures, writing papers, and holding discussions, the society will encourage the preservation of historic buildings by marking those buildings, sites, and trails, to actively collect, memorialize, preserve, and maintain the rich physical history of the people and times of the great city of Commerce City, the society will be involved in various fundraising activities through grant funding and special events. The first fundraising thing that we did happened kind of a little bit by accident, we had had a pioneer picnic, which now we have a third, but the first one, we had so many people that brought memorabilia and really interesting things, and they had, that their families have owned property here forever, and even some that had written on the arsenal. And so we decided that it would be very good to interview these people, and as we started to do that, it was actually Deborah Bullock did most of it, and she got so much information and so much, so much, you know, good, interesting stories from these people, that she started compiling it, and she put together a book, which we have been selling now over a year, and that was our first fundraiser. And so I want to call Deborah up and have her talk to you about what she's found through all of this time, that she's studied the city and the people that she's interviewed, the people in the book.
Mayor and council, thank you for letting us come tonight. My name is Deborah Bullock, I'm the treasurer and secretary of the Commerce City Historical Society. We've been collecting incredible documents, artifacts, and pictures, cover a variety of businesses, individuals, families, and other sources, and here are some of the striking features that we've uncovered. This is the Bagley House, which is still standing on the Rocky Mountain Arsenal National Wildlife Refuge, and some of you may know Lucille Bagley, can you go back? She is the tiniest little girl standing in front of the fence, that's who she is, and she is now about seventy-five. And this is Jerran Arum, who is buried at the pet cemetery in Commerce City, and his name was actually Sergeant Jerran Arum. And Jean Klein, the president of George Bush, the history of Commerce City is actually the history of America, through our history of the Rocky Mountain Arsenal, we have had actually five presidents involved with working on the preservation of the Rocky Mountain Refuge, and Jean Klein was a real prominent citizen who went to Washington on many trips to support that effort. And the Joe Riley Park and his family, the dedication and derby, and this was when Casey Hayes was mayor. And this was at the high school, when they closed the high school. And one of the first, actually the very first event that happened at the new high school was the dedication of the Troy Teeter Park, the tree that they planted in memory of Troy Teeter.
Who is...
Who was the Teeters from? And we did have our first Historical Society Dinner, and this was Tony Johnson and his family. These are the state representatives and senators and county commissioners at one of our Memorial Day parades, which is a very famous parade in the state of Colorado. And we had the inauguration of the Predator Trail around the refuge just last year, or the beginning of this year. Kids' first campaign for the new high school, this was a very important event in our city. And Rod Lunt celebrates the opening of second grade middle school by serving a future student. And this is the demolition of Building One-Eleven, the beginning of the end of cleanup of the arsenal, and we're just going to talk about that.
This was quite a day, one of the greatest buildings out at the refuge was Building One-Eleven, a lot of people thought that it should be saved, it was colonial, it was made, it was built by the army, but U.S. Fish and Wildlife won the entire property and it's through Rod, was decided that all buildings will come down except for the Avery House, the old Officers Club, and, which is now the Visitor Center, and so this building was completely just now, all buildings will be gone, they will restore the entire property to the natural period. So this was the dedication, the groundbreaking, the Prairie Gateway, and Governor Owens was there, and it was really fun to hear him, and not only him, but now everybody says the same thing, the refuge is the jewel of Colorado. And so here's Mike Rock of Rocky Sports, refuge manager Dean Rundle, who is now the whole district manager of Fish and Wildlife, here's Councilwoman Smider, and Kim Hooker, and you can see the great vast hole that they dug, and it was behind, see that white, big white screen, we couldn't see it anywhere, and then they pulled it down, it was this huge hole, and we were allowed to go out and be citizen witnesses, and this was the first cloud for the Prairie Gateway, and here's the Rocky Mountain Arsenal Restoration Advisory Board, and you can see our community co-chair, Mr. Bullock there, and there is also former mayor Dave Busby, and this was a huge day for them, because those folks that worked for decades to, as part of the group, to make this happen. And so Commerce City residents were invited to be the very first to watch a rap this game, and this is the opening day of the Sporting Goods Park, we thought you would enjoy these, because these have everything to do with the city and the council. And here we have, on a bright, very bright morning, refuge manager Jean Rundle speaks before the very first genetically pure bison are released on the Colorado prairie in over one hundred years, they're completely different than the bison that exists, like that you might see up by Golden. So a new home on the Commerce City range is priceless, and they are doing very well. So against all odds, it's an extraordinary story, the prairie and the animals and the people all thriving together, their stories locked together in the past, in the present, and will be forever in the future, this particular piece of property is slated to be the most valuable property on the entire current range, some people think it is right now. And so here we see Mayor Talon, Dignitaries, I think in the tan code is Mr. Bullock, and this is the new refuge manager, Steve Berenson, and this was a great day, because part of the money that came from this, the building of the new Visitor Center came from Commerce City about half of it, and the rest of it, Senator, excuse me, he's not senator anymore, Secretary Salazar has given, so this will be opening in the springtime. And so just recently, on October fifteenth, it was probably the greatest day Commerce City will ever see, it was the signing of the final cleanup of the refuge, and taking that land and giving it over to Fish and Wildlife, and so here we have the Secretary of the Interior, Salazar, an interim assistant Secretary of the Army, sign that letter, and it was a glorious day, and the next day was Refuge Roundup, and we have partnerships with Fish and Wildlife Historical Society does, working on many projects, and on that day, Refuge Roundup, we were doing interpretations for the Avery House, which is directly behind our little display there, and the hub, I thought you might be interested in this, the hub, the DeborahPost.com, this was in the hub a couple of, last week, I believe, anyway, we have so many visitors to the refuge, this year we had twenty-five thousand, when it's moved over here by the city center, they are expecting over two hundred thousand people a year, and they come from everyone of life, and we have them even from Switzerland and Russia and everywhere. So, we have collected enormous amounts of amazing documents that exist nowhere else that are very old, we have the original of this particular letter, and for decades, the people of Commerce City, even through our Memorial Day parade, have tried to express to the people of the nation and Colorado how much patriotism we have and where that came from, a lot of people thought that, you know, that it was all anchored about when the military came in and took thirty square miles from the pioneers that lived there, and so low and behold, Mrs. Bullock discovered this letter through the pet center, pet cemetery, and it is dated June twenty-five, nineteen forty-two, and it's, I just want to read it to you, I'm not going to read you the whole letter, it just says that they have to live in their pet cemetery because the army's taken over the land to build this hemoclope, and so this is what he says, "We wish to assure you that this came as a surprise to us, and in nineteen thirty-nine, when the cemetery was started, we were not in a war, and we had no intimation that the land would ever be..." had no intimation that the land would ever be wanted for any other purpose. We believe that you, as well as ourselves, should not be unduly disturbed by this because if it is needed for that purpose, there is nothing we should do to stop the land from being taken. And patriotically, we believe that all of us should try and make the best of it." And we have discovered all kinds of other things, and we literally have thousands of pieces of material and pictures at this time, some dating back to the very beginning of Commerce City. Mrs. Bullak?
Our planning programs with our Historical Society are to engage in charitable education and literary activities, to partner with the Rocky Mountain Arsenal, to hold programs about the international, national, state, and local history of the Rocky Mountain Arsenal National Wildlife Refuge, to assist the Refuge in restoring that Avery House and other identified homes and places, to continue working on the path of distinction to memorialize those that have lived, worked, and restored the arsenal, writing more books and histories, continue book signings, continue grant writing, to establish a formal foundation which will be called the Commerce City Historical Foundation, to complete video histories of families, and we are also completing written histories of families, to schedule history presentations in the schools and libraries throughout the community. We plan to receive, continue to receive priceless documents, memorabilia from longtime families, businesses, civic and governmental entities, to catalog documents and artifacts and arrange for exhibits throughout the community. And we have our first exhibit on display right now at the Commerce City Recreation Center about the Veterans Memorial and how the history of the Veterans Memorial, and then on November ninth of this year, they're going to rededicate the new memorial. To partner with the entities involved with the path of distinction at the Rocky Mountain Arsenal National Wildlife Refuge, to arrange displays of founding families from the community. We have four more displays planned, and we have to find places to put our showcases so that we can put those in the community. To complete video and written histories of family legacies. And this is our, one of our displays at the Rec Center, there's two windows that they have graciously let us use. Our planning events continue to be our annual membership meeting every February, regular meetings with the membership guests, regular video histories, the annual Jean Klein Awards brunch and fundraiser. And many of you in this room attended that fundraiser in April of last year, and we're going to do it again this next April or May. All right, the fourth Sunday in April this year happens to be Easter Sunday, so that may have to be moved a week. Our annual kind of picnic and history gathering in September, history displays throughout the city, compilation of materials and documents for future books, continual process of acquiring and developing a museum, annual Christmas lights bus tour of the chili supper, participation in the Derby Winter Fest, and participation in all cities of Commerce City outreach and special events. And this was our invitation that we sent, and many people, we had over three hundred people buy tickets for this event. Word of Mander was totally packed. It was a great event. And these are some pictures. Jerry Cladery and his wife at the top left, and the line where they would feed baby people. Bob Gaylor, Lester Mary Arnold at the top right, I think it was Kathy Teeter on the left, and myself and Bob, Hachey's on the left, and then Renee and Nancy.
Bob Keaton.
Bob Keaton, okay. And Reba Droder has done over forty videos so far, people in the community. And this is Casey Hayes, serving our history through video and written histories is vital to our community. And this is Leora Richards, Evelyn Rhodes, and Bobby Crawl. They were, was known as the Grand Dance of Commerce City. This was just before Evelyn passed away. And this is Lois Kimmis. It was announced that her memorial service was passed Saturday, that she will be, the new Commerce City Health Service, putting it out of City High School, will be named in her honor. And we were able to video her just a few weeks ago before she died, so we have that video preserved. And Esther, would you want to talk?
Yeah, there in the City Council, thank you. I do want to start with saying how proud I am to be a very big part of this Historical Society. I was appointed Vice President, and I'm not dissing none of that. This is a dynamic group of people that really have the history of this city in their hearts and their minds, so thank you. We want to do the congratulations, shoot the pictures for the vertellings, and at which Tom passed away in May, Charlie and Lou Carmio are in there, and the seniors that are all celebrated. I was very proud to interview and retain them many times, with Mr. Les Donald and his wife, Mary. This is a picture of them on their fiftyth wedding anniversary. And I was a big part of being with them before Mary passed away just a few months ago. So I did, they have a big part of this city's history and is well written in the book. What's next and how can we find help? I think our plan, to engage, only two questions. The version four, we would like to thank everybody that's in the city that has helped with our cause, and with the City Council, the City Managers, the City Staff, and of course the community services for the lifetime grant community.
We have collected thousands of pictures, documents, artifacts, and memorabilia. And we have over eighty dynamic members and businesses, and we are growing every day. Members have put in thousands of hours of volunteer time, and if we do not write our history, no one else will. Longtime residents are passing away, and you have seen many of them during this presentation, and we are losing valuable history. There is vast and sincere interest at this time, both internally at the Historical Society and externally. We have the capabilities, energy, resources, and the drive to get the job done. This is a forever project, and we have many partners, but we need a temporary building, and we think we have the perfect place. It's at seventy-four fifty Highway Two, owned by Commerce City, and it used to be a service station. Why this building? It is unused and set empty for years. It would be a part of the new Derby renewal. It would be the link between the historical parts of the Southern Commerce City and the North Range. It is close to the Refuge and the Primary of the Trail. It needs to be open and cared for. We have the ability to do the work, maintain and upgrade. It belongs to the city, and the city has in the past leased buildings to organizations for a dollar for ten dollars a year. It will be the beginning of a wealth of agricultural center and museum. And it would be the beginning of a museum for us. Our intention is that at some point in the future, to have a larger facility. But we would like to ask the Council to partner with us and allow us to have access to that building. And we would like to ask you to study that, and we would take very good care of it, and we believe that we could give great money to do any kind of work that needs to be done. Do you have any questions?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Mr. Kennedy. As you know, I was just going to say, that's an incredible presentation, and you all have done a ton of work on this. This is something that needs historical gems or that will live for the next thousand years, and as long as you keep the format, it'll last ever. It's a really great thing. I would ask that we do, to establish, as she has suggested, that we look into leveraging your building and make it available to the Historical Society. Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Hi, how are you?
Fine, good.
I just wanted to thank you all for your wonderful presentation. I just love this group, it's so much fun, and I've enjoyed being a member and being able to attend the functions this summer, maybe that we just had in September. I think everybody did such a great job, and it was so much fun. And people were asked to bring some piece of, an artifact, or maybe Reba can expel on that a little bit, of what was asked, that someone's bring something.
Well, we asked people to bring things that maybe came from their grandparents, their great-grandparents, something that they found in the garage sale that nobody knows what it is. And we had some that were, are still not identified. And then we had one that I believe Jean brought it, and he thought for sure nobody would have any idea what it was, and somebody walked right up and said, "Well, my grandfather used that to put bulbs in the ground." So we had a good time with that. I would just like to say that did these video histories, I had the great privilege of doing them, to listen to these folks that were here from the beginning, or their grandparents were here from the beginning, tell their stories. And some of the things that I found out are so extraordinary that I just think when it's published, people are going to just be floored. I did find out one thing that will be of interest to the city, however, there were lots of things Casey Hayes really told me last, he told me lots of secrets. But something really interesting about the Connor property. And everybody always said, "Well, Mrs. Connor was turned over in her grave, had she known that the city had acquired that property." Turns out, during one of these video histories, one of her good friends told us that it was her intent from the very beginning to have a senior housing there. So it actually came back full circle.
And I just want to thank you all of you, you know, I appreciate that help, Reba with the artifacts, because that was really interesting. And it's just, I've enjoyed being part of the group, I look forward to being a part of it for many years to come. Just wanted to thank you for everything that everyone is doing on, because it's just, it's just really a lot of fun. And like you said, if we don't capture our history, nobody will, so it's extremely important to do this.
And I have to tell you, Tracy, it isn't, it's you, it's everybody that's been so interested in it. You have stepped forward and encouraged us, and we have been so surprised at how anytime that we gave older people from the community a chance, they shared, and shared, and shared, and it's just like, there's no end to it. So if we don't, if we don't take advantage of this now, we're going to lose some true opportunity. And I believe that for us to do this, right, and only have things that are in people's homes, that's not right. We should have a place that's secure, a place where we can put their memorabilia in and that it be taken care of properly. And we were talking about, June, you were talking about, this is one Commerce City. And the original group that got together, their intention was that, that we be one Commerce City, and we find a way to bring the people from the north to the core city so they would understand what a rich history and what wonderful people we have here, because so many of our seniors have made a conscious determination that they are going to stay in Commerce City and don't want to move in. You know, and so it's, I've been here my whole life, so I can't get started. But I want you to know that I think that if we really get a museum and it's accessible, the people from the north will come and see what our history is. And in the past, we've had a lot of really bad press, but when you start working with this, you find out what really wonderful people live here. And it's, it's one of those, I've been involved in several civic things, but it's the first one I've been involved in that I really don't think anybody can be that appreciative of.
That's wonderful. Wonderful. Yes, absolutely. You have my one hundred percent support, I already know that. I think it's wonderful, and I think the people in the north have a great opportunity to learn all kinds of things about the history of our town and how it started. There's a lot of information and a lot of artifacts, and just a ton of stuff that could go into that, so I'm one hundred percent supportive of it. Thank you.
I know you guys call yourselves the Historical Society. I think you're a good investment group, because I'll tell you, given the time that I've been here, you, the commitment that you guys have, and the way you have moved with, I think your passion for this is contagious. So I commend all of you. I think you've done a great job, and I agree, I think everything that we as a city can do to help be supported, be it a building or whatever, I'd like to see you do it. Keep it rolling. I mean, seriously, it's items that you're seniors in, you're moving at the speed of children, so keep it going. You're tough.
Well, we have a lot of, we have a great board, but we also have a lot of founding members that really got this going, and they're still with us, and they come to all of our events, they come to our meetings, and we can, although there's a lot of them in the audience tonight. A couple things I wanted to close with. In the process of writing grants that I've been doing to get some grants, just small grants to help keep us going, it's very evident that we cannot move forward unless we have a building. You can't ask for grants if you don't have a place to put this stuff. And right now, my living room is full of boxes, and my husband is taking higher, we put more stuff in the living room. And I have, just myself, about eight boxes that we need to put in this museum full of stuff. So, and I know Reba has loved stuff, and people are bringing us things, they're calling us and saying, "How can we bring you things?" And they're sending us stuff. So it is a place that we need to start. It's our responsibility to take care of the stuff that people are giving to us, and to display it and to catalog it, and we have to do that. So if we do this right, this is going to be here after we're all gone, because it should be, it should continue forever, and it eventually should continue through the city and the partnership, and it will be sustainable for generations to come to continue this project. So we definitely want to partner with the city to move it forward. Thank you for your attention.
I just think that the rate at which you have proliferated members and established those community partnerships is nothing short of phenomenal. It's been amazing to see, in my time on Council, hearing the kind of newsings of the Historical Society last year, and now where you're at today, it's amazing. And there is a sense of urgency to your request. We're losing those pros of our community every day, it seems like. And we need to, we need to establish this soon and quickly, because we're not going to have those people for forever. This, this building is in my ward, and I can't tell you what a phenomenal asset it would make to have that spot where the community can come and learn about our history and connect with old friends, and, you know, it would just be amazing. I feel very blessed being on Ward One. I have, you know, the new Derby, I have, you know, this potential project, I have the Revitalized Library. I mean, it's, I have the most citizens in town. I feel very blessed. I represent a fantastic area, and an area which history needs to be preserved, and I just... And I am just incredibly excited about this project.
Sorry, and actually, this is about five years too late. But it is, and so it is a sense of urgency right now because the longer we wait, the more people we're gonna lose and the more history we're gonna lose. So it is pretty important that we move right away.
Yeah, well, we keep doing this stuff. We get more and more. It's the best thing.
I just want to make a point, because we've worked out about 20:30 and I'm gonna be 8:00 a.m. and I can come in and talk about people we face. So you can't forget.
No, no, no. We take them at all ages. And that, that's another thing. If we have this building.
Do we have to be open though?
No, people can come in and we can film them all day long. Thank goodness that it really allows, allowed us to use the Connor stage, but we need a place where people can come and tell their stories. They know, a lot of them know that they might not be here very much longer. But we're taking stories from everyone.
You know, I can talk about now, we have two, two-way street on 104th and we have no commercial development. But I would all the way down to Highway 85 now. As long as you don't go into all the Texas teams, that's what you're talking about. You want like all the Texas teams to read that out, this is only Commerce City. Right. Okay. Or we want Texas team to, uh, uh, uh. Mr. Flannery. Just listening to everybody here and my comments, I can't imagine.
I tell you, you're asking me to speak, so.
We get to talk first. Listening to everybody here on council is what I've seen the group do. I mean, if there's any legal way that we can do this and get it accomplished, I mean, this would be something for Mr. Flannery. But I can't imagine if we're not, if we're not using it, the last thing I want to do is step on my, I mean, say something stupid. I mean, if there's, if there's a way, I don't see anybody I counsel that would have any problem with that. If it's duals or, and please, I'm not asking you to do anything illegal, I'm not asking you to do, but just if there's a way to do it, I don't know who to go to, but you and Mr. Flannery.
Well, let me, let me just mention, we already have material from the Historical Society being supported in this building. No, in, in, in the building that.
Oh, that they're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah, he's way ahead of us.
But I, but I want to say a few things that just, there's been a lot of discussion here and, and you're right, Councilman, of course, this is, their, the passion is contagious. And this group and I met, I think it was probably last summer, but the energy in the room was, was very contagious. And I think, you know, the one thing I've learned in, in the places I've worked and places I've visited across the country and the world, that you have to embrace the cultural neighborhoods that you have, you have to embrace the history that you have. And this, this community has an incredibly rich history that is being lost as, as these fellows of society leave their neighbor. And so I think, I think the effort here and the energy behind it is, is very lawful and I think with the city's partnership and moving forward, this really is a partnership for the future as well as the past. And I think we, we support it from a city perspective wholeheartedly. I would, I would say that this site specifically, we want to make sure that it's a safe site. So I, I think that's our first priority, but in looking at moving into a facility like that. Certainly the legal issues, I think, are probably, we're able to probably address the legal issues unless there's something completely unfamiliar to me. But I would also say that if we're gonna look at this, why not also look at other potential sites as well? I mean, this could be the top priority, but there may be other ones there that actually fit some future need for expansion. So I, I would want to also have that ability to come back to evaluate and.
I think no different than while we give your voice, but I don't think that would be a problem. You know? Anybody in council that challenges trying on the best site? Just so it's obvious, Mr. Flannery knows more. You'd have to be north of 96. I'm sorry, I'm making jokes, but I don't mean, I really don't. I think you've done a wonderful job in your presentations, so.
Thank you. We, we are aware of maybe potential businesses or whatever coming forth, but this could also just be a temporary site, just to get us, get a building so we can start getting grants.
And that would make you happy. That would make me so happy.
This, this is not something that is probably even going to be big enough for us down the road, but it's big enough right now so that we can at least just get started and have a place to put stuff and have a place for people to bring things. This has been talked about in our city for about 15 years. I know that Dave Busby told me, when I was mayor, I wanted to get this done. And it is not done yet. So we, we can't keep thinking about a building, if we have a building that we can temporarily use and move later, we're, we're all open to that. But we would like to be up and running soon.
Mr. Flannery. Ms. Bullock, I'm imagining you're the contact person.
Ashley Joanne Stevens.
You'd be the contact person. You'll work with Mr. Flannery and whoever he sends you to. I mean, every time I say work with Mr. Flannery, I don't relax or do anything. But he's the one I ask to be.
Very positive.
Well, then that would be the case. I'm still one of those afraid of home calls. That should be good. Sorry, another joke, please.
We really appreciate your time to let us come in and you're absolutely right. We are just honored to do that. And so, and it's going so fast. That we just, you know, we just make sure we do it right along the way. It's never said we didn't do it right. And so, thank you very much.
Those things you're doing right, you're doing a good job. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Flannery, do we have a motion to direct city staff? Yes. To look into the. Okay, but not for Mr. Bullock because that would be a conflict of interest because it's his living room. Mr. Flannery. Move to direct city staff to explore options for the location of a Commerce City Historical Society facility. Ms. Snyder.
Second motion.
Motion and a second. Voice photo case, sir. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same. Motion passes. Mr. Benson, here it comes.
That was my second. That would be considered, then.
Mr. Flannery.
Was there a conflict of interest for Mr. Bullock because he would benefit from the, from that, from it, documents not being used?
Exactly. And again, saying from, and that was a joke also, please. Okay, Mr. Flannery, are we good? Mr. Flannery, we're good? Okay. Thank you all for coming. And you know what? They talked about your energy level. Now, we're at like 45 minutes to an hour over where we're supposed to be right now. And you don't see anybody up here complaining. So you can have the energy level up here. Thank you for coming. Wait, wait. Judge, Judge, we're going to administrative council business.
I have ten.
I see ten, I see all of them. Work for it.
Administrative council business, that is business that you need some direction either from the council or something that you would like to direct staff to do. Does anyone have any administrative business to receive? Mr. Bullock.
Um, we, uh, council will pay $11.12 for the Christmas tree, for the charity Christmas tree fest. And it doesn't have to be paid today, but I'm just trying to make everybody aware.
Really, $11.12?
A hundred dollars divided by nine is $11.12 each, okay?
Thanks.
$11.12 for each person on council for the Christmas tree. And who does the check made out to?
I remember it was a thousand, if I.
Oh, no, no, that, that is for the bench. This is for the Christmas tree for the charity fest. The bench is already taken care of. And I was going to let Ms. Snyder speak on the bench because she got to talk to Ms. Keith about it and so, who the check goes to? Uh, I think they go to the charity Christmas tree fest. Do you know who they go to for them?
The Winter Fest.
The Winter Fest. They go to the Winter Fest and, um, just, we, we, all we know is we'll have a tree.
$11.12?
$11.12. $11.12.
The mayor's paid you first.
Okay, the mayor's paid you.
And that's on camera.
Yes.
Mr. Thomas brought up the counterfeit money, so now I see Mr. Benson checking all the bills before he, before he dispossess anybody.
Okay. Mr. Flannery, do you have some administrative business?
Do. I was interviewing just, actually, yes, Sunday, right, Sunday. And was a little concerned because, you know, we have this beautiful new closet that we opened up on Thursday, but saw a semi with this 15-foot-long trailer going through there and was making a turn and he was running over to the landscaping and.
Ouch.
Yeah. So, I don't know, staff looking to maybe something that we can do to try to prevent that, making sure, I don't know, maybe having like a restriction from semis going through there or something, because, I mean, it's just, you know, I, I was like, I was shocked to see it and wanted to run over and tell the, tell the guy something, but I figured I should be, that's actual staff or whoever believes.
Mr. Flannery, yeah, that's probably another important question. Can you hear us right now? Oh, I think you can. One of us is a district. I have a. Mr. Flannery. A correction. The check should be made, and I realize you already wrote yours out, so. Winter Fest dash Community Enterprise. But for someone who hasn't written a check, just write Community Enterprise. Because that's the way the bank is gonna do it. They can't deposit a check for winter all better. Can we pay cash? Yes, you can. Just write on the bill, Winter Fest for the community. Is it? 10? 10. Okay, this is now 10:15. Joe. Get your gun. Ms. Snyder.
Okay, just in regards to the bench, real quickly, Carolyn and I have been working back and forth on getting the bench tied up for all of us. As it turns out, Mr. Riley does have an eight-by-eight brick already been donated to, in his honor for the memorial, so there was no need to have that written on the bench in addition to what we have going on because he does have an eight-by-eight brick being donated in his honor. And so, since that was the case, basically, the brick will say something along the lines of, in recognition of all the veterans who have served from Commerce City in each memorial that was following that. And so Carolyn and I have been working on that together and I appreciate her being back and forth really quickly. We will go back and forth to try to make it happen so it will be done by the November 9th deadline. And as far as I know, everything is fine. Is that correct, Carolyn? Absolutely, that would be great.
Yes, we are working on that. Okay, hopefully we should have kind of a lockup.
You're gonna send that to me, right?
And I'm saying that is the space that we're dealing with is about four by five and we have a lot to try to fit in there, so we're working on our officials.
Well, yeah, you're gonna send that to me, right? Okay, absolutely, great, wonderful. And so thank you to council for the opportunity to work on that project and Mr. Bullock. So we'll get that done. And as far as I know, everyone had it, but their accounts to cover the amount. I don't know on Mr. Business account looked, but I'm sure if he's looking to them, if he used to write a check for that or not, but everyone else, as far as I know, was big. So thank you everyone for that.
Reports, Mr. Flannery.
I remember you today. I'll, I'll promise to be quick. We have microphones in for the study session format that we follow in the budget retreat, so we're shooting and targeting for November 8th to have that new spread out. So we, I think in that mention, she will let you know a couple weeks ahead of time so we're, okay. So a couple weeks, hopefully we'll be down there. We'll let you know on the line. The 22nd is the Monday, November 10th? Yes, in, in the next given week, there are times where we have canceled that because of a light agenda. It is pretty light at this point, not to say it's not gonna fill in, but I just want to raise that. 29th is the fifth Monday and therefore no meeting on the 29th, so.
I just, you know, I would hate not to have, be able to have that all done. I mean, let's talk to council. Is there a chance?
Yes, sir.
We don't have one following?
No.
Just, we've got two weeks that you won't have.
Two weeks, about, and so then, just not be here till like 1:00 a.m.?
Yeah, please, that'd be okay.
I'll help you.
Mr. Benson?
You know, I'm bored of that, but I think that that would be such a commodification based on whatever my, my email and everything.
Yeah, and I think that would be the case. Agreed?
Agreed, Mr. Benson.
Okay. Ms. Bullock?
I agree with Mr. Benson because we do need a meeting, the meeting on the 29th is right to the last, immediately will happen before NLC, because NLC starts the next day.
So, so Mr. Flannery, what I think of here is we'll monitor it and let you know.
Yeah, just let us know where to show up around.
And then I did promise the council in the email last week that I would have taken briefly on the meeting I had with Mr. Sean Ford with regard to the Sea Temple at 120th and I think it's in Laea. The building is three quarters filled. We had, we had a very good conversation last week in regard to how to proceed. I mentioned in my email that Mr. Ford was going to look at these secure letter, that legally binding from the city of Brighton that said they wouldn't have a problem if we were to annex into that area. There's a number of other things that will take place, have to take place as part of that, but that's the first step because you wouldn't want to get too far down the road with a legal agreement and IJ with the water district and so on and so forth and then somehow find out that we couldn't annex or Brighton said, well, we thought we could, but we actually can't, we can't, and that's a really bad situation. So I think it's progressing very, very well and I promise to keep you updated as we move forward, but it was a very positive discussion. I think we're, we're on our way to having a solution to this. I spoke to Tim Jones last week from the Soundbass Water Sanitation District as well, so he's aware of where we're at as well.
And, which is my comment, if there's more we can grab, it's the same time.
Well, I think, I certainly don't want to extend the night too long, but the, the, probably would need to, because there's legal, and I don't want to get into the two technical, but, but there would probably need to be other lands as part of that, which would be okay. Anything I can take before I make.
Sure. He's in this today. That's okay, they're listening to everything and anything I say, somebody here will say anyway. Mr. Flannery. I don't have anything other than what we've already discussed this evening, except just to clear for our records, you decided not to make a decision on that November 22nd meeting tonight, you're gonna spend a lot of. Mr. Flannery will give us one way or the other as, as the agenda's built. When, when there is a decision made, if you are gonna cancel, then at that time we'll need a, a motion to do that. Yes. Yeah, because I'm, I'm definitely with Ms. Flannery, I don't want to, we both want to help you and give off enough. So we just a little much. Reports, right?
Start all the way down here, Ms. Bullock. Oh, yes, the only thing I have to report is last Thursday night, I went to the Boys' and Girls' Club for the night out and I had a misconception before I got there and they completely cleared it up for me after I was there. And I completely understand the need for the kids. And I completely understand the need for the kids in the southern part of the city that have already established an area to have it close to where they are, because if you give somebody something and you take it away, it's like not, it's never happened at all. So for these kids that have this there and know it's already established with friends and contacts and staff, I think we need to look as quick and as close as possible to the area they're in to keep them centrally located in that area. Not that I don't think that there's a great need for children up north of the Himalaya. One of the things I've been saying is that there's a lot of parents up north that are hurting, and they don't want to tell anybody anything, and they want to keep it a secret, and they want to make sure everything's okay, but when it comes to any gas money to take somebody somewhere and eating, eating comes first. So in establishing this for the kids down south, we've got to look for something to establish for the kids up north. We need a rec center up north. And don't ever let me hit the lottery, because if we do, I will personally fund it. And so, and everybody will know about it because of the Royal Memorial.
And that's now on camera, sir.
I'm standing behind it a thousand percent. My act of lottery has a rec center up north built for my money.
I love it. And I'm making a date letters appear. Mr. Maria.
Don't have too much to report. I had a really fantastic meeting with City Manager Flannery regarding the senior issues that we discussed, and I'm really encouraged about the work on that front, and I think it's going to be really exciting. I think the seniors are going to be extremely pleased. I think council will be extremely pleased. And a formal report will be coming back about that with City Manager Flannery and staff. Yesterday, Los Angeles Mayor Antonio Villarrealosa was here in Commerce City, and I won't say too much about it because it was not a city-sponsored event. It was a Senate campaign type of thing, but it was a good meeting. What I was shocked about was that the people that hadn't been to Commerce City in a while, the people that came from Thorin and Northland and other areas, they're just like amazed with what we're doing in Derby, what, how it looks, you know, how, what the improvements we made. They were fascinated by Muggsy's. Muggsy's is looking great. I mean, I can't wait for Thursday in that process, because I think everyone's going to really see how much worth it has gone into that area and the benefit to the community. The only other thing I'll mention is that the National Association of Latino Elected Officials, that was accepted to the newly elected officials institute, that'll be November 18th to the 21st, so it'll be out of town then. It comes at no cost to the city. They take care of everything, so excited to take part of that and continue to wear my Commerce City badge and come over to. So thank you.
You know, you're making the city proud, sir. Can't say it enough. Mr. Benz?
Yes, thank you. Tuesday, Tuesday night, I also went to the senior birthday lunch, which Bullock was also there, and I don't know, the company was, that was one of the lowest-attended lunches that they had in a long time. I don't know why. It was very, there was a lot of discussion going on, and it was nice to then, I'm going to try to go with that a lot from now on. Wednesday night, the 20th, we had Dr. Cobb meeting, and I want to express my appreciation to, you know, the staff, Tom Baker, Jared Sterling, and Mr. Flannery, that are always sending me emails before meetings to let me know how I should vote on certain issues. And without that, I'm not, I'm not that comfortable. There's a lot of complicated issues to come under Dr. Cobb. And I should say also, but on the Seat Temple issue as far as annexation, Dr. Cobb would have nothing to do with that. I mean, they would not be able to oppose it or restrict it or whatever, it's just between us, Adams County, and Wright. Again, December, I guess, the Orange too. So also I had a chance to go to the lights on after school on Thursday. I went to that a couple of years ago, where we saw kids benefiting from a Boys' and Girls' Club situation, and they were all doing very well, having a good time, and just end up in trouble, whatever. So now we're getting into Saturday afternoon, college football. And in Austin, Texas, Saturday afternoon, there was a game that started out with 106,000 people there, 100,000 of them from University of Texas, and 6,000 were from Iowa State. During the next three and a half hours, a cyclone moved through the stadium. At the end of the game, there were only 20,000 people there, and 6,000 were still there from Iowa State, and only about 14,000 were there from the University of Texas, because it was the first time in history Iowa State beat Texas. And I wish Miss DeLa was here to enjoy that, because that's her alma mater, but that was a story again, and I thoroughly enjoyed it. Well, I also went to the event at the Muggsy Center, where we have the mayor of Los Angeles Center.
I'll keep it really short so we can have a home. Congratulations, Councilmember Maria. You will be part of the story center there. How far are your furors going to go now? But congratulations. Can you go on? Do you buy lottery tickets every week?
Yes, I do. And I think that, and I got this letter from, oh, it's not even remain no more, but you did, but I think I want to give it to you.
Probably should be clearing house?
Yes.
So if you may have...
You have my name on it.
I'll get it if you may not. Thank you.
Just a couple of quick things. I too had a really positive meeting with City Manager Flannery. A lot of issues were discussed, at least of which was the senior meeting that we had. And also I had a chance to review some of the comments that were made in charge of us during that time, and I do see a sincere desire from City Manager and his staff to work with a plan to alleviate some of those issues and make things better, so I feel really positive about that. And I want to thank City Manager for sitting down with me, talking with me about those issues. And I hope to see everyone coming up to Derby event. It's just like a couple of days away now, and all of it is now in Councilmember Reynolds' board. It has been with me for seven years and is near and dear to my heart, and it's been a project that I have been involved in and worked on for a very long, long time. So you can recently claim it, but as I told just a few months ago, it was with me, and it is a project that is very special and important to me, and I cannot wait to see the future and how it continues on, because only great things are going to happen in Derby, and it's just going to look so great when it's done, and we have walkability and all the things that we're looking forward to. So it can only get better from here, and I'm so excited. Lastly, I attended the funeral for Lois Kimmich, who's a dear, dear, dear person that will be deeply missed. We loved her. She was a good friend of mine. She encouraged me all the time, and I spoke to her just a week before she passed away, just a few days, I think, before she passed away. She made me promise to continue. She was very adamant about making me promise to her that I would continue to fight for Commerce City and for the people here, and even when I got off council to continue fighting, it just seemed like it was very important to her that I promised to keep going. And I can never make a promise for Lois that I would keep, because I know she's looking down, and she'll be watching me, and she'll call me on the phone somehow to tell me if there's something that I need to do. So I love her dearly, and she will be dearly missed. And as I said earlier, if there's anyone that wants to see the quilt, they're more than welcome to call me. I have it, and I'll treasure it forever. And I just am glad I have the opportunity to spend time with her down there and everyone that loved her. Thanks.
Can we be quick? I want to thank Mayor Prochend, Tracy Snyder, me close. Even though I seem to make it through these three hours, every Monday night, I'm spending an awful lot of time with the doctors. It hasn't been easy, and she's been filling in for me at a lot of events, which I truly appreciate. The only things that I actually got to this week was meeting with the Adams County workforce, the work with Front Range Community College, trying to put a program together. And then the lights on after school for Boys and Girls Club, quote, "On Thursday." Go through the calendar real fast, and then we're out of here. The 28th, which is Thursday, from, I have four to seven, it's four to six, but it'll be sometime at four o'clock. Derby grand opening, so that'll be really good. November 1st, 5:15, Boys and Commissions, Grand Commission's at that right here. So hopefully everybody will come. November 4th, this is a professional association. November 6th and 7th, Nine Health Fairs, could be at Adams City High School. Won't be at the stadium this year, but you know it, there's still people out there listening. This is a great thing. We're the only one that does one in the fall, and it's terrific. The only other thing I want to add is that the Adams City High School Mariachi Band is playing with Colorado Symphony. I think it's wonderful, playing on November 4th and November 12th. What a great thing. They're terrific anyway, but I mean, this is, you know, playing with the Symphony, that's really cool. That's about all I've got for now. I say, "Oh, my."
Take a part of your improvising, if I can.
Here, sir.
You're doing a really good job.